To order.
Not.
Oh, let me say good morning to everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Before we do, I'm going to read our board norms and protocols. But I want to say that I read these norms at each board meeting and I do implore each of you to please be conscious of them and try to make sure that you are being in compliance. At times, I have been aware that we are not complying with several of them. And my preference is not to draw attention at the moment these things happen. So I ask each of you to please sit here to making sure that we operate as a unified board at all times and to be careful what we say and how it can be seen. So with that being in, with that being said, as a board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. And so with that being said, we will now have our board clerk do roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownley Page.
Wanda Brownley Page, present.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, present.
Stacy Yeager.
Good morning, I'm present. This is Stacy.
Great, we're all here.
Thank you. Okay, I would like for, to have a motion for us to approve the special agenda and also as a waiver of the notice for the executive session for today.
I'll move second. One of us.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the special agenda with the waiver of the notice for the executive session for today. Could we have roll call vote, please?
Sure. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownley Page.
Wanda Brownley Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes, thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now ready for the board workshop, which is on the proposed budget presentation.
Good morning, everybody. I think we'll start with the parking lot questions that I sent you all the answers to, so if there are any follow-up questions to those.
Anyone have a?
Mr., good morning, Mr. Covington. Number three, when you say supervisors, are these the numbers that we have?
Yes.
So.
Those are the supervisors in child nutrition and the, if I remember the right one, C is actually the chef. The rest of them are the four supervisors.
Okay, and then, number two, there's only, these are only other two employees?
I'm not following, ma'am. Which question are we on?
Well, if we have, we have Mr. Josh, I can't think his last name, Mathmeyer?
Right, he's the director.
Okay, how many then nutritional workers, if we agree at $15 an hour, are there?
I would have to get the number of employees.
Okay, but whatever number we have, if we were to increase their salary to $15 an hour, that 460,000 is additional?
Yes, ma'am.
Or the amount?
That's how much it will cost additional to take everybody that's below $15 an hour up to $15 an hour.
Okay, so then, number two, the secretary and departmental secretary, so those are, those are three people, three employees total, correct?
Yes.
One secretary and two departmental secretaries?
Yes.
Okay, and then these other five additional supervisors are then the only, the remaining employees?
No, that does not include your actual cafeteria workers.
Where are the cafeteria workers? Are they the $15 an hour?
They would be included in the, they take everybody that's not at 15 up to 15.
Okay, so numbers one, two, and three account for all employees other than the administrator, other than Josh?
Yes.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Oh, and I do apologize, and I just sent y'all the email. I forgot to answer you number three on transportation, on what would it cost if we, if we will pay our bus drivers holiday pay? I failed to send that one to you, but I'll give you the number. It's $573,000 to pay the drivers and the aides those days that, that match the bus drivers that we compete with, the companies that we compete with. Remember at the briefing Josh said, the only difference is that we didn't pay holiday pay. Our salaries are very competitive, but we don't pay holiday pay.
573,000 per year?
No, 573,000.
Right, per year, 570, okay.
And Dennis, that is in our email now.
Yeah, I just sent it this morning, three minutes ago.
Thank you. And once again, number two accounts for all employees?
Number two for transportation?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, one other thing. And the, the salaries do or do not include a 2% increase?
That's current. Those are current salaries.
These are current, okay.
Any other questions?
I do have one. Dennis, how would this, how would, I'm trying to think about how to phrase this question. The 573,000 in paying our drivers on holidays, does that now take care of all staff? As far as holidays, or is there still a set of staff that would not get paid on holidays? Because I recognize that our certified gets holidays. Am I making sense? Do we have staff that would not? Okay.
You still wouldn't have your cafeteria workers.
Okay.
They don't get holiday pay.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can we find out what it would take for them to get holiday pay? I'm not asking you to do it right now, but can we find that out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, anyone else?
And number D, number one, are those current salaries?
Yes, ma'am.
Same thing with number HR, number two?
Yes.
And what does CHRO stand for, please?
That's the chief of HR.
Oh.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, I have a question on the insurance. He gave us the dates when they met, but when they had the meetings, did that include teachers? Some were saying they were not included. I'm just asking.
Their rep was there.
Okay, so there was a teacher rep at every meeting? Okay.
I, I, we, I don't know because we don't take a roster, a role for everybody that's in the room, but it was noticed up, but I think they were there. I know the last two there was there, because Dom was there.
Dennis, this is Jody Mitchell. Yes, we always have several teacher representatives at the meetings, all of them.
Good morning, Jody. Do you take minutes?
Yes, in some form or fashion. We are going to have, starting next year, we are going to have someone designated to take those minutes. Right now, I'm the one that tries to do it while the meeting is going on, but we're going to have someone designated next year to do that.
Okay, but you do have minutes of, obviously, the June 16th or June 3rd meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next, thank you.
We will start the departmental review, and first up is Robin Wilson.
If you want me to do it, and Robin can chime in?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, so where is, do we have the, somebody going to put up the actual budget, or do you want me just to go from?
Um.
I have a copy, but I don't know if anybody else does.
I think, did I post them up the last time?
Yeah, we did, but it's okay. You want me to start?
Yes.
Okay, so in the professional workforce development area, we have Dr. Robin Wilson as our administrator. She is a director of professional workforce development. And then in the professionals salary line down below, you have three other individuals in that line, two advisors and one manager who are professional workforce development. Then I was just going to draw your attention to only the major changes because really overall the budgets have not changed much from year to year. We did add, you see, literacy committee, literacy sub-days for PD. There's about four lines there that are new to this budget. Those dollars are set aside for working with curriculum departments and coming up with some additional training and development for the literacy program. So Dr. Wilson will be working with the curriculum team and IIOs to come up with a plan for this next year. And otherwise, the budget has basically stayed the same. We did add, the other line I will tell you that changed is new is the leadership training line with 16,500 added this year. This is really for the aspiring leader program and the novice principal program that we will, last year, as you recall, we started the leadership, aspiring leadership program, which was very successful. And then this year, we're going to also be working with our new principals. And so we will have some programming for them. But those are the major changes out of the professional workforce development budget. Any questions?
I apologize. Could you at least give me the date of the, since I didn't get the total written package, what's the day of the email you sent us? I mean, I'd really appreciate you sharing your screen with us again, but at least give me the date, please.
Good afternoon, Dennis.
Kelly, why is looking for that? I do have a question. So there are, like you mentioned, new professional development areas that was not there last year. Is it because we're trying to streamline this as well? Because I know before in the budget, a lot of things were looped in various places. So is the goal now to ensure that everything is under, well, not everything, but certain categories are now under the professional workplace development to ensure those dollars are used?
Yes, correct. I mean, we're looking at, we have a whole professional workforce development calendar built out for the year, and that was all done in conjunction with all the various departments, sped and curriculum, and all the different areas that, you know, kind of provide PD across the district.
And then, thank you. And then the next question is, the leadership training was a great success last year. We see that a lot of leaders that stepped up are now in great positions. Is that enough money for that? Not enough money, but meaning is that just to cover the leader's instructional guide or what have you? Or is there any stipends or anything that go along with it? I know that I was able to drop in in a couple of meetings to see what they were learning and how they were interacting, but what, is that just an overall perspective that you expect to stay that amount? Or if there is more than expected, will that amount go up?
I'll let Robin answer that, what she's, what they've been planning.
Dr. Yeager, we also are able to use some of the Title II funds that are part of the PD budget to allocate for leader training. So that's not the only, that's just, we reallocated those particular funds out of the general fund for that purpose.
Okay, great, because like I said, that's a great program and we just want to make sure. I would just like to make sure that enough money is going toward that to give the proper support in that area because it has made a difference in how we're seeing leaders in our district. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Dr. Nguyen, that email came from Leandra Hood on 5/29.
Okay, thank you. Just a minute.
Dennis, there is nothing up on the screen in case you, I don't know if you know that.
No, because I was trying to find the whole budget package.
Can I ask the question, why are you looking for that? This is one.
Yes, ma'am.
Brownley Page. The target literacy program had, it was $600,000. I was told that 300,000 went somewhere else, but the 300,000 that was left, would that money go under this department? Because they didn't do the professional development. So that money that was left, where does it go? Does it fall in this department?
Well, right now, it's still sitting under the deputy superintendent's department, but yes, we should roll it over to professional development so they can manage it.
Because it didn't seem, again, no one seemed to know where the money was going or who was over it. So it would be nice to know now if it falls here or where does it fall? So that we can make sure that money gets to train people and give them the training that they need.
Yes, ma'am.
And then my, my other comment question. If we go back to virtual learning, would training for teachers fall under this to give them tips and some ways to better improve themselves? Would it come under this department or would it fall under curriculum?
Robin?
It would work in conjunction with curriculum as we did as part of the continuous learning plan. We worked with that department to support the teachers and their needs, so it would be the same way if we're doing virtual.
Okay, thank you.
And this is HR department?
Yeah, professional workforce development is under HR.
No, the entire, what you're reporting on?
I'm reporting on professional workforce development right now.
I'm sorry, you're looking at your entire human resource budget, correct?
There is a separate budget for professional workforce development, so you have a separate budget for that. That's what I just went through. We've already gone through the HR budget last time.
I needed that answer too, thank you.
Right, we have, HR has basically three departments.
Yeah.
Overall, HR then does the workforce development, and the next one is recruiting, which is also under Kelly.
Any other questions?
Okay, we can go on.
Okay, so next is the recruiting budget. So in this department, we have a director that is, we were hiring a new director from human resources. I just reallocated from HR. We had a vacancy, so I moved over the position to be in recruiting where we needed it right now. We have an assistant director already in the organization and then two recruiters. So that makes up our recruiting budget, those two lines at the very top, between administrator salary and recruitment assistance. It's really not recruitment assistance anymore. Remember last year, we moved from kind of administrative assistant positions to actual recruiters. That was part of the budget for last year, budget change.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Tishman, help me understand what you just said. And good morning, Dr. Wilson. I don't think I've ever met you. Are you the director of recruiting? Is that what it says here?
She does currently handle overseas recruiting, but I'm going to, with the move that we had a person leave, I'm going to bring in a new director of recruitment so that Robin can focus on professional workforce development and we will have a director over recruiting.
Okay, so then that is a new director recruiting, which will be then administrator salary line item. And Dr. Robin Wilson will go to the professional development. They just finished?
She's already in there. She, her salary was 100% already in the PWD budget.
Okay, thank you. And is she on the line?
Yeah, Robin's right there.
Yes, I am, Dr. Nguyen.
Oh, I said good morning. Maybe you didn't, maybe you're muted. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so in the recruiting department, again, I have two recruiters, an assistant director, and I'm hiring a new director. Really, there's no major changes in recruitment. Overall, we do get Title II dollars. And so really, all that we've done is just, some dollars have been spent out of the Title II budget and some out of general funds, but overall, the budget did not change significantly. So I'm happy to take any questions you have about any of the lines.
Before we dive into questions, I just want to make sure, I think this was asked before, are we sharing the screen or will we be sharing the screen today?
I'm trying to find the document right now.
Got you.
Everybody's budgets.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So Ms. Tishman, so is the, the 168, is that base salary and benefits?
No, that's just base salary.
Okay.
So.
And what, what's the benefit package?
If you go down to social security and Medicare, there's some cost in there.
So you're looking at 84,000 plus the benefits would end up being what? What would be the total salary?
What, what are we getting at 84,000?
Well, you have, help me understand if I'm not reading this correctly. Recruitment assistance, the 2021 is 168,000? And you're saying that's for two employees?
No, well, okay, I'm just going to tell you, between those two lines is the total cost. They're not allocated correctly right now. You have some dollars that need to be in the administrator salary and what should be on the recruitment line is basically 130,000. So it's just, all we need to do is have Tracy just move dollars up to the other, the top line.
Okay, I'll then, I'll wait till these numbers are corrected. Thank you.
That's fine.
Ms. Tishman, right now, right now you have three employees up at the top, is that correct?
Okay, I have a total of two recruiters.
Two recruiters.
Two recruiters and one assistant director. I have also in the budget, I have dollars set aside for a director, which has not been hired.
Okay, so that 168 and the 83 is going to cover four employees?
168 and the the 83, no, you'll have, up on the administrator salary, you'll have the director and the assistant director would go there. And then underneath recruitment assistance, which is not labeled right, it should be just recruitment, it should be 130,000. It just needs to be moved. The overall dollars are the same, it just needs to move between the lines.
So those two, two line items added together will cover four salaries?
Yes, that's correct. That is correct.
What is this recruitment and signing bonus year one and two?
Okay, so we have, you know, various incentives that we offer to hard-to-fill positions. So this is for hard-to-fill positions. This is for when we hire math, science, sped, we offer two-year sign-on bonuses. They get 3,000 the first year and 2,000 the second year if they stay.
Okay, so this is for our teachers, not for, not for the people that you are hiring?
That's right.
Okay. And let's see.
And you'll see that down in the Title II budget. There's two lines down there to recruitment sign bonus, want first year recruiting sign bonus, second year. Those three lines together are the total for hard-to-fill sign-on, signing bonuses.
And then the advertising budget, that's your total advertising budget for publications and outside advertising that you have to pay for?
That's correct. That also would cover any, if we, we have memberships that allow us. So we have a membership with various organizations, diversity organizations, and they give us so many job postings, virtual fairs, access to databases, so that goes to pay for those things mostly.
And I noticed that this year we had $60,000 in the sped waiver, that we don't have that for this next year.
You do. You go down to, again, go down your Title II budget line, and there's 100,000 down there. It says recruitment paid sped waiver.
Okay.
So it's just, it's just split between general funds and Title II funds.
I think, yeah, Ms. Tishman, this is Stacy. I think she was referring to the one line above it where, where it says recruiting sped waiver right above recruiting supplies. Janie, is that the line you were referring to?
Yeah, where it went from 60,000 to zero.
Yes, and all I'm saying is, we just put the dollars down in the Title II. It's in that, it's in that line where we have 100,000.
Where this year we had 120 and it went down to 100,000.
Yeah, we didn't spend all of it, basically. So what we've experienced is that we didn't spend all the money that we had set aside. So we reduced it there and we added it, we reflected more what the number is. As you recall, we had to go through a lot of agencies to get sped employees, so that's a reflection of that.
Okay. And we, we pay a relocation incentive?
We do for employees who are coming from usually out of state or so many miles away. That's just to help them. It's a $500 relocation or $1,000 if they're coming from a longer distance.
What are the parameters for that? Is it any?
Yeah, it's anybody that qualifies based on mileage.
Good morning, everyone. It is based on mileage and it is based on the fact that we wanted to help our teachers who wish to be in our school district. And so this is currently, if they reside within a 249-mile radius, then they can receive the $500. If it is over that, then they can receive up to $1,000. And they must follow IRS guidelines in terms of relocation and submit information to us.
So it's for teachers only, not for administrators?
This one, this line is for teachers.
Teachers only, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Good morning, Cynthia. Good to see you.
Morning.
I do have a question. You know, the board has challenged you guys to do more recruiting in diverse areas. And so, you know, with COVID, hopefully, there's still opportunities for you guys to get out there and, and do a lot of travel and things of that nature. Is this travel budget, I know it's the same as last year, is this enough for you to go into more areas for recruitment? Or, and I guess, Kelly, this is the question for you too, because we do want to help recruit more minority teachers. Is there any line item reflective of incentives for giving? Right now, there any incentives for minority teachers who want to come work part of our district? Or is that something that the board?
Yeah, you got several programs, really, Stacy. So we've got the parent-to-teacher program, the teaching fellows program, and the sped waiver. Those are three very specific incentive programs where we provide incentives for them. If they come on board, we pay for part of their or all of their tuition, and provide the additional, like in the teaching fellows program, we provide the actual classrooms here. So there's, there's at least three different programs like that, plus all the, like I said, the memberships that Cynthia has in various organizations. We found that to be very effective, where we get to have access to their resume databases, attend their virtual fairs, and also post positions. And so that's been the big, I think, winner, plus then traveling. But they've done a lot of virtual, everybody's in the same boat as we are. And so there's been a lot more virtual career fairs, and we are hosting our own virtual career fairs as well. Stacy, we can't hear you.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. Last question is about advertising and communications. There was a question as if we can expand our advertisement reach to include more minority-owned newspapers. So is that also reflective in the budget? Because I noticed that it did go slightly down. But have we considered those factors prior to this budget to add in additional to make that extended reach?
Yeah, they, they have, of course, looked at several different ways to reach diversity candidates, and that's partly the, the memberships I was talking about with various diverse organizations. But I know that Cynthia and Sharita are working on various strategies to place certain positions in newspapers as well. I mean, the fact is that we probably get most of our candidates through online. But, and the fact with newspapers anymore, some of them do not, of course, have a daily newspaper, and you have weekly newspaper. So that's a little bit limiting, but they are looking at that.
Well, Kelly, this is Valdina Nguyen, and that's the reference that Dr. Yeager had made to my request for you. Number one, these incentives, are the local minority applicants provide the same opportunities?
Oh, yeah, so are you talking about for parent-to-teaching and teaching fellows, all those programs?
Correct.
Yeah.
And secondly, did you put in the board library the list of publications that you were not able to reference, just sheer memory at our last board meeting?
I, I have not yet, but I will.
Okay, thank you very much. And moving forward, will we have a recruitment plan?
Yes, we will.
And when will that be presented?
Well, I would like to get our director hired. We, we do have one now, but I would like to get our new director in. So as soon as I can get somebody hired, I would think we could have a better recruitment plan to go over. Thank you.
Hi, Kelly, this is Randy Lopez. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Kelly. So Dr. Nguyen kind of took a couple of the questions, but I'll just follow up that I was going to ask. So just want to ensure, you know, as we talk about our diverse candidate pool and, and really recruitment, I think recruitment and development are two strong areas that will not only help attract and recruit diverse candidates here, but help keep them here if we can cultivate them and give them the resources that they need, right? So these two are areas that are super important. But I, I just want to ensure that I think part of the conversation that we prioritize and really look at our own area and, and candidates within the Kansas City, Kansas area, but just Kansas City metro area as a whole. For me, I think that's, that's hugely important. I think that's been part of the conversation, is how do we, how do we prioritize those local folks who are homegrown? Because I think those are the ones that are more likely to stay long-term, rather than if we go out and recruit from out of state, who will, you know, stay here for a couple of years, two, three years, or however long, and then, and then leave. So I think those local candidates make a lot of sense. So I actually, the, the plan for, the recruitment plan, I think, would be really interesting, even if it's a little out of date. If you wouldn't mind sharing that, I'd love to just kind of take a look at that. And I think you're right, like having the new director put their touches on it. But I think so that, so the recruitment for me, not only goes for like teachers, but also those higher-level positions, right, those administrative positions. How are we looking at local candidates or even our own internal candidates to make sure that we're giving those opportunities to, to folks who are from the area, who lived here forever and, and are deserving and, and experts and, and have been excellent in, in this area? So those are just some priorities that I would, that I would want to see. And I just want to make sure we have the, the resource available for that. So thank you.
And Randy, there had been, I think it was brought up maybe last year before, about giving an incentive for those who live in the Kansas City, Kansas area. I know we had discussed that. Did you have a number or anything in mind right now as far as a financial incentive that, that they could maybe think about?
Any? I mean, it's an idea. These are things we can put out there as a possibility for recruitment strategy. But I can tell you, one of the strongest things that we do is our grow our own programs, like the parent-to-teacher program, the sped waiver program. The, the parent-to-teacher, that is 75% of people of color, plus about 60-some percent are from the Kansas City area. So that's a really successful program, and it meets a very specific need. So that's why we put those programs in place. And so yes, we can look at all those things. That's the stuff that we look at all the time.
This is Wanda Brownly Page. Can you give us some numbers? You said parent-to-teacher was successful. How many parents have become teachers?
I can give you, actually, I think I provided it to you in the library probably a couple of months ago, but I'll put it back out there, because we have all those statistics. Dr. Wilson ran all those.
We know that you were putting it in there. We want, so I'm glad we know now.
Yeah.
I'll look to that, but I, I'd like to see some numbers. And then this is a comment. Last year, we ended with 35 positions, because we kept asking, and we were told they were filled. They were not. They were filled with subs. Now, how are we going to turn around with 35 subs? Now, again, I'm just saying, we got to do everything we can to fill these positions with certified people. And the, the sub thing, I get it. Sometimes you have no other choice, but it makes it harder, because parents are complaining to us. You got a sub in there, and they're supposed to be teaching Spanish. They can't speak Spanish. Again, I know there's limitations, we, but I think we got to do all that we can to fill those positions, to make sure people are there who are qualified. And when we ask, we need to be clear that it's 35 qualified, certified in the subject matter, or is it 35 subs? And, and it got a little tricky there. So please, for the sake of peace, can we be clear? It's just a comment.
Yeah, we can, look, you know, we want them all filled too. So this is the constant challenge. And the fact is, sometimes it is our salary table that limits that. And so we can only hire however many we can hire, and, and there is just shortages. But we are, this is something we work on daily.
And along with that, one of the things that I have been constantly pointing out, that when I attended that conference in Washington DC, that those are the, the statistics throughout the United States. People are not actually going into teaching, and we're trying to do the best that we can. And so as we look at our numbers, we will try to make sure that we can include and hire individuals to take those positions. But if we can't find them, if we cannot get them, I have to commend them for being able to do everything they can to make sure that the children are learning within the classroom. But we will step up and we will do better.
Well, I, I just made the statement, because I, I'm being honest. I didn't feel that the information was forthright in regard to, because I kept saying, okay, is it 35 certified? And they said, oh, the positions are in. And then at the end of the year, we found out it was 35 subs, because parents kept saying it. I asked, I didn't get a clear answer. That's all I'm asking. I know it's difficult. I got four people who mailed me their resumes. I'm going to bring them to you Monday, who are interested in working in this district. I'm not saying you got to hire them. I don't have a dog in the race. I'm just trying to pass on information. I will bring that to you, because I have talked, pleaded, begged, because I would like to see us get 35 certified, because those 35 positions are still open unless you fill them. I don't know. But I'm just saying, can we be a little bit more forthright? If they're not filled, we got subs, then that's what we need to be able to say to people. We're looking, we're trying to find, but the, the message was a little mixed last year, this past year.
Kelly, there's two other points I want to make. The, you know, we get a lot of their, well, actually, the Wyandotte West highlights graduates, KCK graduates from all over. And so there's a lot of recent graduates who may not be in education, and that's what your fellow program, I understand, is about. But that, that is a pool of individuals, KCK, Wyandotte County, metro area, who have, in the past, wanted to, to work for USD 500 and did not get employed. And they clearly had the credentials. Secondly, you said perhaps it's the salary, but not exactly what you meant probably, because our entry levels are pretty competitive. But third, and this is something that the board, I think, must consider, because you have not sent a follow-up memo, Kelly, to your, what, to your principals? Did you, and for lack of a better word, the hiring freeze? Is this the memo you sent to, to principals only or all hiring managers?
Can you repeat that? I'm not sure what the, what you're asking me.
You know, what was, we were asked, why was there a hiring freeze?
Oh.
You, and we then received the copy of the email that said, in essence, don't, don't hire one classified, don't hire one certified. My question is, was that sent to principals or all hiring managers?
I was focused on principals and the IIOs when we made that comment as related to budgets for the schools. And so I sent out probably two or three different communications and answered individual questions, as people had them, about it not being a hiring freeze. Now additionally, with classified, we had a process that we were asking people to follow to just make sure that, you know, they needed to hire those positions right now. And that's really as related to the fact that we were on a stay-at-home order. We didn't know how we would be moving forward this next year. But since that point, I, I think we're at a point now where we have basically lifted that request and, and letting people just hire for the school year on a classified basis.
Okay, and, and I'm listening to the words you're using. You say you think, have you followed up with a email?
I will follow up, because I just had this conversation with Dennis the other day.
Okay, please send the board, and CC the board, please.
Yeah, that's fine.
This is Yolanda, and I, and I just have a general comment. We've talked a lot about our new hires and our open positions. I just want to make a general comment about even our staff that we're losing, and just how we're spending time with evaluating the feedback that we're receiving, how we are taking that feedback and seeing what changes can be made. So again, this is just a general statement. We are talking about budget, professional growth, making sure our staff have what they need. So as we're evaluating the budget, just making sure that we are taking those things in consideration, because these positions will continue to open like other corporations, but we do have to self-evaluate.
Thank you.
You know, Ms. Clark, I'd like to follow up with that comment. So as, as a, as a, as a piggyback, do we have exit interviews, Ms. Tishman?
We do have exit interviews.
Okay, so then, Ms. Clark, I guess I need clarification. Do we, are we having that conversation?
So I thought I had asked if we had exit interviews. I don't know how that data is being used. So hopefully, I mean, I'm sure Kelly can answer that question, but I definitely think that we need to look at that and see where our common trends are.
We don't get very many people return exit interviews. That's the first question, I mean, first answer. We do try to get them a couple of different ways. And, but I'm, I can do whatever you want me to do as far as providing information.
When you say return, Kelly, what's the process of an exit interview? What are the two different ways?
I believe right now, and I'll ask one of my HR helpers here, they are sending out an email and also following up with phone calls if they don't get a response back. Jody, is that correct?
Yes, they receive, when someone resigns, they do get an email confirmation that their resignation has been accepted. They are requested to complete an exit interview online, or they can set up an appointment with Human Resources if they don't want to do it online. Some people would rather meet with someone. They then, and you know, some people do not want to answer that, those questions while they are still employed. So we do let people know that they're welcome to forward the email to their personal email and answer it within 30 days of their departure from the district. And again, we do follow up. If we do not get an answer, we do a second request and then go from there.
Okay, I want to just interrupt. We have a lot of information we have to go through. And could we type that and then come back at it with it at another time so that we can make sure that we get through everything today? Because we want to finish, complete it, because we have deadline dates that we have to meet in relation to our budget.
I'm fine with that. I think it is worth another conversation at some point.
I agree.
Yeah, I'd like to be, yeah. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Tishman, for the information.
No problem.
And I think probably board, we probably need to have executive session on a conversation like that.
Can we go on, please?
I'm done with my budgets.
Thank you, Kelly.
No problem.
I'm going to cover the Board of Ed and the superintendent. Only major increases for the Board of Ed's budget is that we had to increase the attorney expense line. I trend this year that we're going to get to about $350,000. So we did increase the line for attorney fees. And we also took the travel line up, which you all attended more conferences. We saw the need to increase those two line, with that line. So that's pretty much only changes in the Board of Ed. Any questions on the Board of Ed?
On the Board of Ed, this is Wanda Brownly Page. Should we, is there ever a time when we should be renting cars?
If you are traveling, you're allowed to rent cars.
Oh, they, okay. But I'm, well, I just wanted to know.
Okay, did we exceed our travel budget this year?
Yes.
By how much? I'm, I'm trying to look at the printout that you gave us. And out of district travel, we went over by, okay, I saw, I saw. Okay, so it's a good thing we didn't go to the national convention in Chicago. Then we really, really would have been out of budget. We, so we need to keep a closer eye on our travel budget then next year, so that we don't exceed it again.
Actually, actually, I would say that we needed to have our travel budget increased because the goal and reasons why it increased this year is because we were able to get more education and information from the national level, and as well as we received a number of awards that were given that required us to be able to travel to receive those awards. So I think it's So I think it's really important for us to allocate appropriate funds so that we can get as much education that we can at a national level, so that we can be able to know where our district is going and be able to understand how other boards are doing things. Because we do go to the local KSB, one for Kansas, but there's not many schools here that mirror our district. So I think we really have to be aware of how other districts, similar to ours, that includes a high level of minority students, how they effectively run their district for success. And I, so that was my statement on travel. I do have a question about attorney expenses. It seems like we really went over the ball on that, attorney expenses. I know that we've looked at the bills previously, but from my knowledge, and Greg, you may be able to help us with this, does the board have a process that we use for us and when we use your attorney services? Because looking at that, it seems to be there's calls almost daily from board members to you, but I don't think there's any process, or I don't think there's any procedures for the board members.
I don't know that I get calls daily from board members. I'm not sure that would be what would be driving any of the increase. The normal process for anything that we do for law services for the district is we have a, we get a matter that may come in, get referred over from the administration. We fill out a form sort of saying, hey, this is what we're looking at on this. But then aside from that, you've got the board meetings, you've got phone calls, you've got other things that will come up on a daily, weekly basis, where there'll maybe be some requests for information or something along those lines. And then, you know, you've got other issues that come up over the course of the year. And I know the board's aware of some of those that have been a little out of the ordinary as it relates to some of the issues that we've talked about. I mean, I'm not sure how to go specifically into each one of those without talking about what those specific items are. And I don't know what specifically is increasing it. They look like it's hugely significantly over the budget from last year. But, I mean, you've certainly been hired last year than you were the year before.
Greg, in your contract, is not that form have the language to say that it has to be presented to the board for approval before a lot of those expenditures are made?
I think the bill has to be approved. I don't remember what the contract says. But obviously, the bill's always submitted to for approval by the district and, you know, any.
That's after the fact, right? That's after the fact, that it's incurred. So since Ms. Drew made the comment about moving on, there's a couple of things in here that probably we need to take some time to look at before approving, because the twenty-four thousand membership, maybe there's some memberships. I mean, we belong, I don't understand how that all is explained. We probably need to break this out, including the attorney fees, but even the clerk overtime, I thought we were looking back at that. And then from three thousand, thirty-two hundred to fifteen thousand traveling expenses, the manner in which we travel, if it's not to the KSB, I don't remember the process or even the, I know as a KSB board member, I was going to go to the Washington meeting, but I don't remember it being opened and some of the other travel open. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of dollars in there that we don't really know what we're spending.
And as regards to the travel, I think that we, as a board, need to discuss when we travel. And sometimes we don't need the whole board to go to something, but one or two representatives go and bring the information back when it's going to be an expensive trip.
I think that we put this out on a.
So it's just something for us to think about for the next year.
And I would also like to talk about, you know, the attorney expenses for us to look closer at too, to see if we can have maybe a process for how board members are, the process for when we're using that attorney, since it is over four hundred dollars an hour.
There's a process for how we use any attorney dollars. It's written in the contract.
It should be pretty straightforward. I mean.
Yeah, let's take a moment to review that. It doesn't have to, not right now, but just later.
No, I mean, this is essentially tabled. Essentially.
Can I, I'll just make just one more comment around travel. And this is more generic broad for, I think, our entire district and each department as a whole. If we're anticipating that there are some shortfalls potentially in our budget or just that we're having to cut different areas, I think travel is an area that we should strongly look at. Dr. Yeager, I appreciate your comments about trying to find professional development, learning opportunities statewide, nationwide. But in a year where we might see some budget shortfalls and where we're trying to cut in different places, I think travel is a space that I, as a board member, would say that we need to model for the rest of the district and say if we can limit our travel and/or do virtual trainings rather than in person. And I like Janie's suggestion in terms of not sending everyone. I think that would be, that would be great. And so, and we're still uncertain of what travel's going to look like. I know cases in Florida, Arizona, Alabama are starting to be on the rise, Oklahoma. So we're not sure what's going to happen. So I think as we think about travel for the district, we as a board can probably limit our travel as well. And other departments should probably strongly look at in a year where, I know at our job, at the foundation and many other foundations, we're slashing travel budgets because of the uncertainties and because of budget shortfalls. So I think that's an area that all departments should really consider. Are these potential travel trips necessary? And could we reduce that line item budget in different departments in order to save money elsewhere in our overall budget? And then in terms of mileage, if we have district vehicles, I wonder, is it really necessary to be renting vehicles and/or reimbursing mileage? And this is just, I need to learn this. So, you know, if we're driving to Topeka, couldn't we just use a district vehicle rather than having to go out and rent a vehicle from Enterprise or whoever we use? And as another way to try to save money for the district. So, you know, for our cabinet, for our administrators, you know, like, can we start using district vehicles rather than having to pay everyone a ton of mileage? So those are just questions, nothing that we have to figure out now since we're tailoring this, but just generically for the district budget. Thank you.
And for reference, since I've been on the board, there has been very limited ways in which members of the board have been to various events outside of the state. Usually when there is a KSB workshop, board members drive themselves there. The events that are part of this, to my knowledge, is the first time that we've been actively engaged. And so I agree with Stacy, maybe we need to look at it specifically to be able to create the criteria at which we will be able to engage ourselves in this. So let's just put this on our list for discussion and to look at it in detail, and then we can just go ahead and move on.
And Ms. Drew, please indulge me. Mr. Lopez mentioned something that just dawned on me. The recruitment travel is going to be impacted because many, I'll put it like this, you can't go south. Those states are peaking, and so our people will not travel south in the next couple of months because those states COVID is spiking. And also, what Mr. Lopez is speaking of, our administrators, our cabinet, those who get travel allowance, I'm not, I don't know, but I would not probably believe that they would, one, rent a car or submit travel mileage. So those are things that, while they're small pennies, they do add up. So thank you, Ms. Drew. We'll move on.
Thank you.
Next, we look at the superintendent's budget, and two changes there is there was a line for five thousand dollars for student transportation. That was when we brought students into central office for the superintendent's council. Those costs are really just transportation, so we transferred those dollars over to transportation. And the other line with the travel line or out of district travel, for some reason, there was not one in the superintendent's budget, so we had to put a line there.
Well, that probably, maybe this is Valdino in speaking. Again, depending on how the superintendent's organizations, the nationals and things like that, if those meetings are in the southern states, they probably will be canceled. So travel is a hot button.
One more thing to add to the travel concern. I know that, I believe, a teacher had written in or someone had written in that they are not getting travels reimbursements from going building to building or something of that nature. If we could put that on a line item to discuss, I'll have to go back and read it. But I think the concern was because they had to travel inside of our district when they submitted reimbursement for it. They, there was a restriction relating it. So if we could talk about that or put that in the parking line, if people are required to travel with their own vehicle from building to building, how that reimbursement works?
Dr. Yeager, if you could send me the person's name, because I sign reimbursements every month for people traveling between buildings. So if that person has a problem, I need to know what the problem is. But we do reimburse staff, but I call them my tenor people. If you're assigned to one school, more than one school, and you got to travel between schools, we reimburse that mileage.
Okay, so I will find that and send that over. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to communications.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
In this budget, we have the positions of the Executive Director of Communications, the Director of Communications, we have a video production specialist, graphic web design specialist, marketing specialist, and administrative assistant in the communications budget. You will see that this budget also includes the position of the Chief of Staff, and then it also includes positions that relate to federal programs. And I'm going to pitch to Lisa Walker to explain those positions.
Yeah, I think if you can scroll down on the sheet, there's a, if this is the updated sheet, there was an updated sheet, I think, that was sent to the board that pulled out, pulled out the federal programs into a separate section.
Lisa, before you go further, what header is on this one? And that's maybe a Dennis question. You can hear me.
The updated sheet, I think, is Chief of Staff slash Communications.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, yes. Here we go, right. So if you look down at the last section, we have split out positions that are funded through Title I and Title IV. And so one thing that, right, so the line fifty, federal programs professionals, would include three individuals. That would be our Coordinator of Federal Programs, our Office Administrator, as well as our Grant Writer and Grant Manager for the district. And then you'll see that we have added in using Title IV funds, lines fifty-three through fifty-seven, some specific positions and supports related to Title IX and those regulations. So that accounts for the increase in the budget this year as compared to twenty nineteen, twenty, because of the Title IX components. And just as a reminder, those come from Title IV funds, which is spent three ways, safe and healthy schools, well-rounded, and technology.
Lisa, this is Dr. Win. So are these new positions or are these jobs not being done?
The, Dr. Win, good morning. The federal programs Title IX investigator would be a new position. The other positions that I mentioned are ones that I believe were from last year, twenty nineteen, twenty. So they are not new positions.
But as you say, they're not identified under nineteen, twenty budget. So what makes them?
I believe it looks like the federal programs professionals, as well as my position, were in the twenty nineteen, twenty, lines forty-nine and lines fifty. So line fifty would be the Coordinator, the Office Administrator, and then the Grant Writer. So those are just continuing positions into twenty, twenty, twenty-one. But the new addition for next year's budget would be the Title IX investigator in line fifty-three.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, ma'am. Lines forty-nine and fifty were in the twenty nineteen, twenty budget. So those are Executive Director of Federal Programs, and then the three professionals, Coordinator, Office Admin, and Grant Writers. So those were in the twenty nineteen.
Stop, please. Stop. So there's only a difference of four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars between those two years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, from fifty-three through fifty-seven?
Yes.
The question is, are these new positions? You said the investigator is?
Yes, ma'am.
A hundred thousand dollars?
We have put that in because we are looking at an individual that either has a law background or an investigative background. And just based on the level, that is what we anticipate it could go up to. It may not be that much.
Okay, and help me understand what you just said. Because one ear, and I'm putting it politely, one ear heard one thing, and I don't want to judge you. You're saying you are looking at a position, or you're looking at an individual?
A position.
Okay, so that that position may or may not need a salary of a hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay, and help me again, fifty-four then through fifty-seven are new positions? And you're saying, well, actually, fifty-five are those fringes?
Yes, ma'am. Fifty-four and fifty-five would be the fringe for the position in fifty-three.
The seven thousand is, what, a single insurance or bonding insurance? What is that?
That would be health insurance.
That's single, ma'am. That's what the district pays for each employee.
Okay. Lisa, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at, of course, I'm a person who prints stuff out, and Dennis sent us the papers the other day. I printed them out, and on line, what you're calling line fifty, I have three hundred and one, three hundred, one thousand, two hundred dollars for twenty twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am. I believe originally that amount included the investigator in it, so it included four positions. However, that line is Title I funding, line fifty, and the Title IX investigator would come from Title IV. So it needed to be pulled out, and I think the salary just didn't get pulled out of that line originally.
Okay, so the total of six forty-three, seven thirty-two is incorrect. It should be five thirty-six, oh eighty-two?
Correct. What you see on the screen is the updated.
Okay, and I see the one, one hundred and twenty thousand goes up to one twenty-four, eight forty-eight. And what is the difference there?
I believe that that is the projected increase.
No, that is the travel, the.
Oh, sorry.
Travel piece added on to the Executive Director salary.
The travel piece, you said?
Yeah, the the fringe for travel allowance for executive director.
Travel allowance.
Hey, Lisa, this is Stacy. How are you today?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good. So question, when we think about the new position you were describing needing a legal background, when we look at our past of how, because you did come on when we didn't have a federal programs director. Now that you onboard, how how do how does that work together for that position to enhance how we are doing our federal programs oversight?
Well, I think we want to make sure that we have safe and positive school settings for students and staff. And so if, in the event, we have a need to provide more support in those areas, either for training or for when situations arise, want to make sure that we have the expertise and also the manpower to handle that. You know, when you think of a district our size with around 23,000 students and then several thousand staff members, you know, we're one of the largest school districts in the state. And so I think we're looking at that as a good addition to the program to make sure that we provide those safe and healthy schools for staff and students.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, Dr. Win again.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we still on the same investigator. Has this job description been put out yet advertised?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so it may be subject to budget constraints. So who's doing that job now?
So let me
We don't have anyone in that job.
Let me interject really quick. So that's a new position. So if in the other budget, when Dennis presented it, as always, any new position that we have, we have to get board approval. So this is, we're doing the backside of it and showing you where that comes from. So then, if the budget is approved, then we bring to the board a job description. And then if the board, then the board would, of course, see the job description. We don't have an investigator right now. What we have to do is hire someone from Greg's office sometimes, or we go out and we get the information. And so it's a mixed bag of what we do here.
And and thank you. Good morning, Dr. Faust. So what and how is that cost sifted out?
Just just to interject real quickly, and it's not always our office that does the outside investigations. Sometimes we have entities as well. Part and part of this is being driven by the changes to Title IX regulations that are coming down this summer.
So how is that cost sifted out? How much have we spent? Because this is just salary. This is not this is not fringe, correct?
Correct. We would have to go back and pull all that out and put it out to the side for it. But I can, I mean, of course, we can show there there is a there's a high need for this one in our in our district.
Here's my concern. Anytime that moving past, I'll just say today, and I'll just speak for myself, and I have a question. The pushback is, well, you approved the budget. So in essence, don't ask any questions. So I'm I'm going to be proactive and on the front side and sit and ask enough of the questions to say, on the one hand, how have we been handling this this in the currently in the past? And so that's the subject of my questions.
So that's what we were saying. We actually have to hire outside to get an investigator to come in due to Title IX, which, of course, you know, Title IX, so we would have to hire outside. And then that's where you would get the information from, from an outside entity.
And and in some instances, Dr. Win, the investigations are are being or have in the past been handled internally by people in the district whose job isn't necessarily to do an investigation. So it may be somebody who doesn't have the training to do the investigation. It may be somebody who isn't really independent from the situation. And a lot of what's come down in these new Title IX regulations is is this directive to have somebody be there who can conduct an independent investigation of of Title IX complaints as they arise. And then if there ends up being litigation or suit, you want to make sure you've got somebody who's qualified to do that when you put them on the witness stand. So they can say, well, I've got a background in in XYZ, and this is how I did the investigation.
Well, and I understand that, and I appreciate your comments. When those directives come down, then we need to be informed. Thank you.
Well, the directives literally just came down. I mean, the the Title IX regulations are being floated around. And I think KASB just put out within the last week or so some modified policies for that that we're taking a look at.
Good, thank you.
Greg, are these the ones I shared with you the other day?
You're muted, Greg.
I hate these Zoom meetings. That's that's what is being referenced, and there's still a challenge, I think ACLU has filed a challenge against the the federal regs right now, too, that's going on. So we'll see what ultimately ends up coming out of them. But yeah, the KSB reg that you're referring to, or not regs, the the policy modifications that they put out about two weeks ago.
Okay, that go into effect in August.
Yeah, so some some version of it will have to go into in August. And we've been trying to work with internally with the district on trying to what our our policies ought to look like in that regard. A lot of the bigger districts are not doing the standalone. They're doing one that combines Title IX and Title VI, so we may do something like that.
So we're looking for someone who is experienced in Title IX and Title VI.
That would be better. Yeah.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Okay. Well, when do you expect to put this out? After we see the job description?
Are you asking me, Dr. Win?
I don't know if you can answer that. I don't think it's under your category.
After it's approved. It would have to be as normal as after it's approved, then we would.
After the budget or the job description?
The budget. We don't have a budget for it.
Hey, let's go on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt or Alan, you are going to do the EC's curriculum.
I believe, Alan, you are going to do this one, correct?
Matt, you're the newest assistant superintendent, so the budgets for next year.
Sounds good. I will take it then. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Matthew, please hold for a second. Ms. Drew, I guess Mr. Covington or whoever handled that last one, was that a chief of staff salary increase? What what was the 20,000 increase on the chief of staff salary?
I can answer that. That was included the health insurance benefits, so we included it all in the salary, where it may have been broke out into the health insurance line prior to that, or wasn't properly reflected. But I included that so you could see the full, full, full cost of his salary along with the health insurance and car allowance.
And that was current?
Correct. That was not an increase.
Sorry, I forgot to ask you that.
That's okay.
So I'm going to move forward with this. Good morning, Madam President. Good morning, Board. I wanted to just share the assistant superintendent's budget. Not a lot has changed on this. We weren't going to make a lot of adjustments just because everything seemed to be in place where we needed it. You'll notice that there is a significant drop in administrator salaries. The administrator salaries this year will only be for the assistant superintendent. The and Dennis, you'll have to help me if I'm saying this wrong. But I believe that we moved the instructional improvement officers from this budget to the deputy superintendent's budget, correct? Or Tracy, I just want to make sure.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so that's where you see that significant drop there. So just as you're looking through there. I don't believe we have much to share beyond that. You'll notice that we do have IC mileage, so that came up in conversation, so I just wanted to address that. We will have instructional coaches that do have to use their personal vehicles to travel from building to building. So this line item covers that cost for our instructional coaches, so they're not using their personal vehicles without being paid for it. So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Are there any questions?
I see where you don't have anything down for video editing. Wouldn't it be a useful tool?
I believe that was moved, since it's not under the budget from last year, and I don't believe it was in the budget for the prior year. I think some of these things are just sitting there where there used to be money in those places. I believe video editing, now that we have a communications department that's really big into the video editing piece, it's been moved to their budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Dr. Win. $3,500 for food. What is that?
In case we would have, it covers the $10 per person. So when we have instructional coaches for their holiday meal, we pay for that through that.
Could you move back up, please? And then group insurance increase?
I'm going to have to defer to Dennis and his team for group insurance.
I'll try to respond. I can't say specifically, but if you look, it looks like maybe we had some formulas incorrect or something because it literally from the 1920 to the 2021 budget, they literally flipped. So I'm presuming we may have had it misbudgeted, that the insurance really should have been up here, and social security should have been down here for the '12, '15.
Okay, I look forward to the corrected forms.
Thank you, Tracy, for explaining that. If we want, we can move on. I believe I'm next with the curriculum and instruction budget, too. So I'll start here. Oh, that's the assistant. Okay, perfect. As you can tell, our main goal was to ensure that our 2019, 2020 budget, we kept that as our 2020, 2021 budget. So our goal was to keep within those means. The administrator salary is the director's position. The professional salaries is actually one salary. It's the curriculum coordinator. There's one person in that, that's Ms. Suzie Legg, and she's on the Zoom with us today. So if we have questions, she can help answer those. We have one administrative assistant, so that's the secretary salary, so that is her position. Our department budgeted for the 2019, 2020 school year, an early childhood instructional coach. So that person sits under this budget. So you'll see that we have that listed here as well. So those are the salaries for our team. The majority of our team sits under the HR budget or Dennis's budget, because the majority of them are instructional coaches. And we had that conversation the last time we had met. So what I'm going to do is just highlight some of the areas that you might see an increase, a significant increase or decrease, because our goal was to get the current or the 2019 budget, 20 budget. We wanted to get the things in the right line items to make sure when we allocate money for it, it's in the right place. So you'll notice that there was a bigger increase on our software. That is because we have to include Seesaw, which is our current platform that we're using for the continuous learning plan. So if we move forward with any kind of remote learning, we need to have that. So that's that piece. It also includes a larger item, which you shouldn't have heard about, is Edge Annuity, which is our credit recovery system. So we have that included in there. So those are the major costs of the software. You'll notice that we've we decreased the math relays budget, but increased Battle of the Books. Battle of the Books and Math Relay, their main contributor is extra duty for the employees that we need to run those events. Those are big events with a lot of kids. And so we have, that includes the the lunch that we feed them, it includes the salaries for extra duty, and it includes the materials and supplies for those events. IC mileage, our team did not travel. We've looked at the last couple of years to see how much we're spending. We weren't spending the 36, or can't read if that's 38 or 36 off the top of my 36. So we decreased that and made sure that the money went to the right place. We did decrease our event food. We moved that into those event line items themselves. You may be asking the curriculum subs. Our goal is to not take teachers out of the classroom during the day, so we utilize extra duty rate. So instead of having them have to create subplans and take away from the instruction, we've decreased that line item, so we would increase some other places as well. You may be asking what curriculum salaries are. We add on five extra days beyond the 10 extra days that a IC gets in their contract, because we have extra duties to start the year. We plan, we facilitate professional learning for new and beginning teachers, so we add those five days on, as well as at the end, closing out and getting ready for the next school year. We increased our staff development fees. We were noticing that we our our goal is to build capacity within the system. And so whenever we have people that are, you know, attending any of the KSDE conferences or, you know, these dyslexia trainings and things like that, it costs money. And so we wanted to increase it and then also get some equity across all of the content areas. Currently, we focus heavily on math and ELA, but we want to ensure that we can deepen our understanding of the social studies and science areas as well. So we've increased our staff development fees, as well as bringing in any kinds of worker or consultants to help us with things in the system. Office printing, we do a lot of printing through the print shop for our math relays and other events. So that increased that budget line as well. We decreased our extra duty because we moved it into the proper places up above in the math relays and Battle of Books, and the spelling bee is part of Battle of Books as well. So if you scroll down, for me, please, thank you. You'll notice that we increased our textbook budget line, and I know that we had talked about this at the end of the year. I want to say thank you to the board for approving the new curriculum resources. I've heard lots of appreciative comments saying that they were really appreciative that the board approved this because they're excited about the new things that we'll be implementing in the classroom. We know that we had to increase that budget line because we were short. So we increased as much as we could by moving transportation. In the past, our department covered some transportation costs for diploma plus. Those were moved over to diploma plus, and then we moved whatever extra we could into textbooks and workbooks. Classroom books is for adding new classroom libraries and things like that. And then we have a $40,000 budget line, which stayed the same. That really does help cover most of the science equipment across the district. So science tables, microscopes, things like that fit under this budget, as well as any equipment that we would need for our department. So that's our budget. We stayed pretty much in line with the 20, 1920 to the 2021.
Matt, this is Wanda Brownlee Page.
Yes.
STEM programs, do we support that? Would that fall here?
The what programs? I'm sorry.
STEM. Have you ever heard of STEM?
Yes, STEM. I thought you said SIM. Sorry. Yes, STEM. So STEM, actually, the math relays were actually changing it to be called STEM relays. And so we really are trying to emphasize not just mathematics, but what are those science, technology, and then also the engineering opportunities? And so this year, we tried out some new kinds of activities and events within the math relays to emphasize the the other parts of STEM besides the M. So thank you. That's a good question.
Hey, Matt, this is Stacy. How are you?
I'm doing well, Dr. Jaeger. How are you?
Good. I have a couple of questions. Do we, okay, now that we're looking more at diversity and making sure it's in our curriculum, is there a certain percentage of allocation that you have specifically for ensuring that the new books that we purchase and new materials specifically have a certain percentage of minority representation? So what I'm asking is, you know, there's a number of authors in areas that specialize in books that represent diversity. Is there is there a percentage of your budget that you use specifically to make sure that those books are in our children's schools or classrooms?
Anytime that we do any textbook adoption, or we look at that $20,000 there for classroom libraries, one of our main, our major pieces that we do one of our main, uh, our major pieces that we do is we look at the diversity part of, um, any product. And so that's our main goal is we want our students to see themselves in the materials and not just a certain group of individuals. So that's part of the process that we go through. And there's a whole section in our, uh, rubric and our criteria just for, um, diversity and cultural relevance. So yes, great question. Um, that's always our goal in our department is we want to ensure that our students see themselves in the curriculum that we provide.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, hi, this is Dr. Win again. What's a textbook handler? Line 15?
Textbook handlers, yep. Um, textbook handlers, so we have building level textbook, um, we call them textbook liaisons. And so we have one person at all of our secondary buildings. And so their goal is to ensure that when textbooks come in, they're, um, inventoried, um, that they're in the right place. Um, we also have, sometimes we have, uh, attendance or, uh, populations change. You know, we have a very transient population. So sometimes the, um, population will increase at one of our middle schools or high schools. So instead of buying new materials, those folks will, um, be our handlers of the materials and get them sent to the right places. So we're not having to pay more money for new materials. We just, we, we move them around the district.
So this is an individual who does that as an extra duty or a total job?
It's an extra duty. So it's a stipend. So we have, let me look here. I have that written down, I believe. Um, we have seven middle school textbook liaisons, five high school. Um, we have one at Bridges and one at KBC. And then we have somebody at the district level that manages all of the textbook liaison. So they're all part of that.
And so line item 20, did you have IC mileage in the other budget?
Yes, so that's for the building instructional coaches. This is for the curriculum instructional coaches. So we have a set of curriculum folks that work at central office, and they travel around the district and support all of the different buildings. So, yeah, so we have.
I guess in, in the same conversation we've been having, they use their own vehicles and not the district vehicles?
Yeah, so we have, um, 15 people, um, for, uh, this team alone. So we wouldn't have enough vehicles, just district vehicles to provide them. Also, there are, um, I, there are over 50, um, building instructional coaches that support the system. So they, we, we wouldn't be able to provide each person with a, a district vehicle. So we have to pay them their mileage because they use their personal vehicles.
Okay. And for, I guess, later discussion, they could possibly move into the Zoom category at some time as well. As suggested, this rhetorical question, uh, statement.
Sorry. Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, David, are you on?
Yes, I am. Uh, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
Madam President, Dr. Faust, Board, uh, appreciate being able to share, uh, the budget with you. Um, you guys saw pretty much half my budget, uh, the other night, um, but this will show you the rest of it as well. Uh, for salaries, uh, we have the director position. Uh, we have one program evaluator, and then we have two data integrity positions. So my office has a total of four positions, and you can see those salaries there as well as the insurance and so forth. Uh, we have a budget for paper, uh, for printing and for supplies. Um, we do a decent amount of printing of booklets of test results, some of the stuff that, you know, we've given you as well. Um, next is the line for IB testing. Uh, we have $150,000, uh, budgeted for IB. And so that is the top half of the budget. Uh, scrolling down, you'll see what I presented the other night. Um, basically, we collapsed that ACT Aspire and MAP, uh, lines into the illuminate, uh, FastBridge line as well as our survey, uh, software Qualtrics. Um, we have 15,000 allocated for seniors to take ACT and work keys, and then $25,000, uh, for the AP exams. Um, the AP exams are $94 a student. That was a question Dr. Win had last time. Um, and if you're wondering about IB, I think it's 119 a student. And that is the entirety of my budget, uh, overall reduced by about $55,000.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ren.
Thank you, Ms. Erin.
Uh, Dr. Hookpin, you're next. You on mute?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Good morning to the board, Dr. Faust, and our great staff.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to start with our admin salaries. So we had a change here, and so the change was due to the fact that we now have myself, Dr. Charles's, uh, salary, and also all five of our instructional improvement officers are here. So our secretary salaries, we move the secretaries, who are a part of the work that we do, into this area. And we have three staff members who are part of this budget line, which then increased our insurance and also FICA. As far as our office supplies, we reduced this particular line because we felt that we didn't need as much here. Travel remained the same. And line 31, transportation decrease, uh, this is where we had students who are part of Faster Than a Fifth Grader. And so we felt that we could reduce the funding right here. Uh, as far as student activities, this amount remained the same. And these are students who participate in the superintendent's student council. Number 42, uh, target literacy. This was reduced to zero. So here we have, um, 24 positions that were moved to HR in this particular section. Line item number 45, uh, this line item belongs to Tracy Cooper. And so this is just one person. And then we have also another change in this area, uh, line, uh, item number 48, uh, reduced to zero, uh, due to the fact that we removed Tier 3 interventions because of the fact that it's not being, is now being paid at the school level. Item number 51, summer credit recovery. So we removed this, but it will be added back in the next school year. Uh, it was removed because this particular item is now being paid, uh, with a grant. And so that's a change, and those are all of the changes for the upcoming school year. Are there any questions?
Good morning, Dr. Hookpin, Dr. Win. Could you scroll back up to the salaries, please? And again, are these current salaries?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Tell me again, how many, you have three secretaries, you said?
Three that are a part of working with IIOs, myself and Dr. Charles.
IIOs, and that's in the administrative salaries? Administrative salaries, how many people? You say six?
We have, we have five instructional improvement officers, myself and Dr. Charles.
So seven.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Dr. Hookpin, this is Dr. Jaeger. Good morning. I do have a question. You mentioned the reduction because of Faster Than a Fifth Grader. Um, we want to make sure that we still are anticipating having it maybe at a smaller level or you mentioned for line 31, the transportation was reduced because of Faster Than a Fifth Grader. Um, we're still going to have that, right? It just maybe depends.
Yes, definitely. And so, uh, the funding was paid from the deputy superintendent's budget, but we can definitely look at, um, other areas to support this. The intent is not to not have it, it's just to decrease it in this particular budget.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure that we are still advocating for it. I don't want any take away. I'm feeling like we're taking it away. Thank you.
Yes.
So what budget would we take it out of?
Uh, that's a good question. Go ahead.
Throughout, most of these budgets, you will see there was lines that individual departments were paying for transportation using our school buses. We just moved those funds over to the transportation budget so they wouldn't have to bill a department for the transportation of using the bus. They just covered the cost in the transportation department. So we moved those dollars over to transportation.
So we increased transportation's budget by the, the difference, by $20,000 to cover that?
Yes. And that line, remember, when I went over to superintendent's budget, there was a $5,000 line there. We moved that over to transportation, so they wouldn't have to bill superintendent.
Okay.
Good morning, Dr. Hookpin. This is Randy Lopez. How are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good morning.
A couple of quick questions. Um, well, one, I guess, just to speak to the, the salaries piece. And this is probably, this is not specific for you, but just overall, um, when we're presenting the salaries so that we maybe have more consistency, if, um, I think it would be helpful, and I know each department prepares them, but Dennis, if, uh, or whoever, if we could just be more consistent in terms of what is being included in the salary line item, whether it's just the base salary or if it also includes, um, the car allowance or health insurance. Because I see that some of them are a little bit different. Um, and so I think that might help, um, with any questions on the salaries line item if they were all just consistent and if we knew what was included in them, that would be helpful. Thank you. Um, the question I had is around the targeted literacy, uh, which is, uh, has been moved down to zero. Um, I know part of the conversation is trying to find a program. So I know, you know, literacy is, is an issue that our district is, continues to, to work on and trying to improve on. Part of the conversation is to create a program that is specific to us that, that would replace, uh, or take the place of the targeted literacy program. Um, can you speak a little bit more to that? And, and is that included somewhere else in terms of, because I know there's gonna be a cost to it. Um, so where would that be found, um, in terms of creating that program and bringing resources to it? Um, any, any thoughts on that?
I can, I can speak to it because I was working with, with Matt and, uh, Suzie on it. There's no cost to the district for that because we would do in-house. And so that would, those individuals are already here. So if, for instance, um, and Matt, you helped me out with this, um, speaking specifically with Tracy, giving her and letting them create a framework and then training everyone. So we would start with training every IC, every principal, every K through 5. We want a literacy program that goes from EC all the way through 12th grade. And so that's all in-house with the individuals because we have, I'm not sure if y'all, you're aware of it, but we have ICs that are specifically over literacy in every one of our bills. So in every, uh, subject matter, we have an IC, but we have those that are just for literacy. And so those individuals would already be paid for that versus having to go out and get someone who, um, we'd have to contract. Now, uh, Tracy and some teams may have to go to some training or do some virtual training to come up to speed with where we are. But we want to actually have a homegrown program that is, um, specific to our students.
Do you anticipate any other additional costs to that in terms of any other? I, so again, we have some ICs that that's their job, right? So would, that, they would work specifically on that liter, whatever the new literacy framework is, they wouldn't have any other duties. Um, it would be specific on that literacy. Do you anticipate that we would need to hire any additional, um, support staff or, or, or resources for that?
That is.
And then implementation in terms of, so building the curriculum, we, there wouldn't be any cost for like, having to purchase any, any of that?
Not, not at this point. That is not what our goal is. Our goal is literally to, um, research, find out what is the best for students of, um, that for, for, for students who are struggling readers. And of course, in each, um, of the budgets, you know, there's some, we have some title, I think it's Title II or Title III, Title III, wherever the professional development dollars are, there's professional, you know, professional development dollars that are, um, out there. And so that would be specific for our PD, but we're wanting, our goal is to create an in-house, homegrown literacy program that is suitable for our students.
And then this is probably for a different conversation. Sorry to go off topic here, Dr. Faust, but I appreciate the information. Um, just, it would, it would be helpful to, to maybe know a timeline of when that framework and when that training and all that would be rolled out, um, because then my question is whether we'll actually have some literacy programming this coming school year or is this coming school year being used to develop it, develop that framework and training and programming, and it wouldn't be implemented until the following school year or even mid-year? So, um, that's probably for a different day, uh, conversation.
We can share. Actually, we can share with the board the, we already have training in place for all subject areas. And so that's our PD calendar, I think, um, uh, Dr. Wilson Robin, um, stating that. And so clearly, yes, we can share that with everyone. We actually have, was it already, I don't want to quote, I think, but it was like 500 teachers or so that have already signed up for it for the summer? Not just for literacy, but there are multiple trainings that are going on. So we have a, a PD calendar that's already in effect. So we are on the move.
But for the specific new framework on literacy, that's already been developed then?
No, um, that, that was a conversation, um, with Suzie and Matt. So they are working on a framework that one.
Yeah, that, that was my question is, when, when will this new literacy framework be ready to implement in the schools for, um, to, to replace the targeted literacy program? So when will that framework? Because I know it takes time to research and then develop and put it all together. Um, so will that be ready for this coming school year or for the next school year?
The goal would be for the fall.
Yeah.
And Matt.
Yeah. No, you're fine. Uh, Dr. Faust, Randy, thank you for the questions. Um, our goal right now is, uh, we focused heavily on our EC5. That's because that's the foundation of all literacy. And so with the dyslexia training and the KSD, that's our main goal. However, we're also working with, um, our IIOs to develop the secondary side of this. So it will be, um, it's an ongoing effort. Our goal this year is to really help, um, our secondary teachers at all levels, especially, um, ELA and the disciplinary content. So we want to have, um, we want to have teachers that understand in any content area how to support struggling readers. So, um, that's our goal this year, and then we'll continue to strengthen and develop our program.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Dr. Faust.
Uh, Matt, this is Stacy again. To clarify, line 45, targeted literacy, I see you're just keeping the name, that name. Is that correct?
As of right now, that's just the name, yes.
Okay, thank you.
A separate question. Uh, this is Yolanda, not related to what we just spoke about. I'm trying to understand office supplies and how we budget for those. So I've noticed that they're in each person's budget. Are they in the school budget too? Is there an administrative budget that, how does that all roll up together? I'm looking at you, Dennis, because I figured you may have to answer me.
All, all departments are responsible for ordering and budgeting for their supplies. Same thing with schools. Uh, each, each department and school has a line item for supply. We don't have a warehouse for supplies that, you know, you can just go order from. They're typically with purchase orders to Staples and stuff like that.
Okay, so we're all in the same building, which some of these we're going through, most of them we're going through today. We're all in the same building and I have a copier in my area. Is that copier assigned to that area? And they order the paper for that copier machine?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Dr. Win again. So we don't have the, uh, contract with the paper company anymore?
We, we have a, um, state price for paper, but.
No, we had, used to have a contract that we ordered, you know, 100 million reams of paper.
I can maybe speak to that if you want me to, Dennis. This is Tracy Kaiser. Um, I know we do have a special agreement with Staples. When we put in the purchase orders, it goes through Staples Paper only, um, as their vendor. But each department is still responsible for paying the cost of whatever, however many reams or cases they actually need.
Uh, thank you, Tracy. I think we had a contract with a paper supply company, so it probably would have been cheaper than Staples.
Okay, I, I'll check into that. I'm not sure, um, but I will look into that.
Tracy, I can speak to that a little bit as well. That actually did change, uh, a couple of years ago because the pricing per case of paper, um, was significantly better ordering it in a just-in-time, uh, model, uh, through Staples, um, and then their Diversity Product Solutions brand, um, of paper. That's why it's a separate vendor, because only paper items are ordered through them using that vendor number. Um, so it was a better deal price-wise for the district. So it was a better deal price-wise for the district and also met our diversity goals.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isnard.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
I'm sorry. In terms of literacy, do we have any kind of program to assist parents with working with their children as well? Have we thought about that? I mean, I know we're doing what we can for the kids, but are there any strategies or anything that we can also use to help parents work with their children in regard to literacy?
Absolutely. That is, of course, what we've been talking about. Also, how do we make sure that parents know, for instance, the fundamentals, if we're looking specifically at the fundamentals of literacy. And we just hadn't had, had that opportunity to talk about. So in our conversations with Matt and Suzie, that's what we were talking about. Do we actually know what the fundamentals of reading are as educators? And so if we do, then we should be submitting or sending home, your child should be working with this. When you go to the grocery store, are you talking about these types of items? The sounds and phonemic awareness, do we introduce that language to our parents so that they know exactly what we're talking about? When we talk about diphthongs, are we talking to parents in that language? Because that's important. So I agree, we're wanting to make sure that we're not only literate at the school level, but we're making sure that our parents are literate with the language. And I think that's most important. I'd say they're illiterate, but when we talk about literacy and the literate of it. But yes, that is all in the making. We have to make sure. And so with the training now, anything that we train our ICs, our teachers on, principals are now required to come to that training. So that way, when it goes out into the, we'll say at the EC and elementary level, when they're pushing that information out, it should be incorporated in their weekly newsletters so parents will know. We haven't always required our principals to come to the training. So when it came to evaluating teachers, the principals weren't able to, actually couldn't speak specifically if they were doing the program right or not. Because they weren't, they weren't invited to the training, I'll say that. So now, every training that we do for teachers, for the ICs, principals, what principals and ICs experience at first, they work out the kinks, and then we present it to the staff.
Thank you.
And Dr. Faust, since you mentioned we have a grant writer, that could be something your grant writer is hunting down for grants because we had a very positive report from the program at, and some of the older members have to tell me either Argentine Middle, where they were helping the parents learn how to monitor their children.
Absolutely. And we're all for it. We are definitely with parents as partners, making sure that they are in those readings. Because I do believe that, and I'll say this, we have to make sure that we have, our kids are literate. And so, yes, with Peter, Peter who is our grant writer, we will be looking for all those. We are looking specifically, and I'm going to be this year pushing our EC department. I know they, they'd like to push back on this literacy thing, but we have to make sure that they are getting the foundations of it. So the, the goal is to make sure that we're starting with the letters and sounds at the early childhood. And actually, it's tougher at the high school level, but we will be making sure that they are trained in there. And that's the whole plan for the framework for literacy. But yes, we will be right, looking for grants. And we've actually reached out to the state. And there'll be some things that we'll be doing with MTSS that will also go in with our dyslexia. So we've got to make sure that everyone can recognize the signs.
This is a question either for, I guess, Mr. Isnard, since you answered the other one. Do, are, does the district look for those types of savings for all supplies? Because the random, and I don't call it random, I don't know the proper word right now, but the multitude of supply purchases via these individual credit cards are, are excessive, in my opinion. So are you doing, I mean, we, well, two questions. Are you looking for those type of savings, number one? And number two, Dennis, aren't we building a new warehouse?
So the district is always looking for those savings. But yes, although we do have some supplies and materials that are in a warehouse, so cleaning supplies, for example, because of the volume that's used in buildings across the district, they may keep those on hand. And the custodians may order those from a central place so that they can be delivered.
No, I'm sorry. Cleaning supplies are a little bit different because they are chemicals. I'm talking, I was just saying on the level of office supplies. No, chemical supplies are altogether a different ballgame.
I don't know that I can speak to all of those plans. I jumped in on the paper one for Wayne and the purchasing department. But I know Dennis has been working with Wayne on the supply vendors for next year as well for student supplies. So he may be able to help us out there.
Well, that's something we need to consider. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to diploma plus with Dr. Irvin.
Good morning, Madam President, Board Superintendent. I'm presenting information regarding the diploma plus department. If you look at line four, that salary is for a teacher that we have that is housed at Cerner. They teach the technology internship classes to the students housed at Cerner. So we send students to the teacher there. The biotech position was not staff this year. And funds will be moved, they will be, that position will be partly going to VOTEC. Currently, part of it was in HR, 25% of it will be moved to VOT. The entire position will be moved into the vocational fund next school year. The administrative salary, line eight, that's my salary as the director. Line nine, that's the four coordinator salaries. Line 10 is the CTE program coordinator salary. Line 11, those are one, the lead college and career coordinator, that's one per high school. If you go down to line 15, the college and career facilitator, those are per high school. And this year, we added one for Sumner. So for, you should see five instead of four. The middle school computer teachers, those are eight middle school computer teachers at the various middle schools. If you look line 24, that's our transportation budget. That includes taking our students to KC, the tech center. So we take students from the high schools on an AM and a PM shift to the tech center. Not only that, but we also, for all diploma plus experiences, whether that, for the middle school and the high school, college visits, all of those is also included in the transportation. Substitutes. So we have teachers that are taking kids to the experiences. Those, that's the amount of money that we pay for substitutes. Student registration and fees, those are for different activities like BizFest, youth entrepreneurs, competitions, those are student registration and fees. Extra duty, that's for our campus-based staff. Whenever we have our teachers, they attend the field trips. And if those are on Saturdays, those experiences, that's where the extra duty pay comes from. Professional development. Well, I'm drawing a blank on a professional development. Oh, Prep KC, Prep KC for professional development because we contract with them for our experiences. Moving line 31. Line 31, the 58,000. I think there's JAGs across America's graduates. And we did show, I think, an increase in those. This contract for 133, that's the Naviance. I'm not familiar with the software contracts, those software budgets. I'm not familiar with those. Line 36, general supplies and materials, those are our general office supplies. Also, lines 37 and 38, those are our general office supplies. Mileage, those are coordinators and people who travel from campus to campus. Because in our middle schools, they, they share per campus. So they are able to receive mileage from going from campus to campus. Line 47, a large portion of our budget, that is the college tuition and fees for the tech center and KC, KC. The next line item being the textbooks that we pay for, for the students. Line 58, those are the middle school liaisons. So they are shared between the middle schools and travel back and forth. Faces, those family and community engagement reps, they are also at the middle school, working with families and helping push initiatives from the district. The rest, insurance and FICA.
All right, and then I'll finish up Dr. Bilbo Irvin's budget. Of course, you heard her end-of-year diploma plus presentation at the board meeting this past week. And you know, she has great plans to continue to expand that work. And so one of the things that she wanted to do was to add a diploma plus coordinator at the elementary level to provide onboard experiences for students prior to secondary. So we are able to use the title for Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant to help supplement her budget. So you see there then the addition of a diploma plus elementary coordinator. So that would be line 81, which is a new position. And then 82 and 83 would be the benefits associated with that additional position. And then 84 would be the project lead the way training for teachers who facilitate that program. And then line 85 would be the addition of the Prep KC connector platform for elementary students at 42,000.
I'd like to go back to, excuse me, line 64, what's the specialist?
So I have to go back to look at that one, because at this time, I'm unsure of which position that is.
Okay, and.
Because.
Line 30, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Line 30?
Yes, ma'am. So wait a minute, go back. Let me write that one down, Tracy.
Okay. 54 specialist?
64 specialist.
Five, four, wasn't it? Oh, 64, yeah.
64.
Yeah.
Under the at-risk budget. I need to go back to look at that one. And what was the other one?
30, 30, 30, 30, yeah. Contract. You mentioned, well, just say 30, 31 and 32. I think you said the professional development is Prep KC. So what was 30, 31, 32?
So 32 is Naviance with the 133. I need to research the 30 and the 31.
Okay, thank you.
Because 31 is, looks like JAG, but they increased, they went from 58 to 88. So I'm trying, I want to see why that didn't change. So before, but 31 looks like JAG, jobs across America's graduates. And so we have that contract where they have a specialist in the high schools working to make sure that students are college and career ready. So we partner with the state of Kansas with that program. So that's 31, but they went from 58 to 88. And so I don't see their increase there. But that's what 31 looks like, jobs across America's graduates. Dennis?
And you know, help me with what you just said. Go back to the, I guess, 64?
Yes, ma'am.
And this says at-risk budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Help me understand how these, I guess, 58 and 61 qualify out of the at-risk budget.
I would have to ask Lisa, because I think those are, are those some title funds there, Lisa?
No, those are actually at-risk funds. And I think maybe Tracy Kaiser might be able to respond to that.
Sure. Being, because we passed legislation this year that restricts the use of at-risk dollars for at-risk services slash programs. And I'm not understanding how those fit that criteria. So thank you, Tracy.
Yeah, you know, and the at-risk funds, as you know, you know, are anything to keep our students in school, you know, prepared to graduate. And so at some point in time, these obviously were eligible expenses under the at-risk. Now, if something in the law has changed and we need to move them to general fund, we sure can. But you know, it's constantly a split between a lot of our staff, they're paid out of general fund or out of at-risk, depending on the free and reduced lunch counts at the schools. And that's how a lot of times we determine what percent can be spent of at-risk in that building. So that's something I would need to research, if these are still qualified at-risk funds. If not, we can sure move them to general fund, and we would move teachers or counselors or something into these areas that would qualify.
Right, because we sure don't want to be audited and have to pay back.
Oh, absolutely.
So thank you.
Hi, good morning, Ms. Bilbo Irvin. This is Stacy. I do have a question. If you would scroll up, it, a little bit as it relates to our college and career students. Okay, lead college and career coordinators at our high schools plus career facilitators. So my concern is those who are in our alternative schools. We know every year, and I attended the Reach 500 and other areas, and they did an excellent job of talking about the number of students who are moving on to college. My concern is, are we working with Fairfax and other alternative schools to ensure that they are getting the career college opportunity as they move through our programs? And, or is that part of something that these counselors are going and reaching out to them too, to ensure they have that same opportunity as those who are in our five high schools?
And so you're correct, we don't have a college and career coordinator or facilitator at the campus that you mentioned. But we do work with them and we, and our coordinators will work with them to ensure that we're meeting their needs as well. And so, and they do have counselors at those locations as well. And so any information that comes out from our department regarding college and career, they are, they are aware of and participate as well. They participate in Naviance as well.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we were giving them that opportunity and not missing out on them being able to take full advantage of the college experience.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Yolanda Briley Page. I just want to make sure I wrote down the number correctly. When you had the D+ liaison for elementary coordinators, how many coordinators did you say? I missed that. I'm sorry.
There's just one person.
Okay. But, oh, okay, 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 got it. Thank you, sweetie.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is Yolanda.
Oh, go ahead, Yolanda. Go ahead.
This is Yolanda. And you may have. This is Yolanda, and you may have, you may have answered this, I just want to make sure I understand, how are we leveraging your programs to be able to recruit for the district? So, I, I know we have the fellows program, but how are we leveraging our, what we're, you know, the kids going to college and so on and so forth, to be able to bring people into our district?
Well, part of the, the K-step-up program is what in diploma plus that we work with, with K-State and KC-KCC as the homegrown, grow-your-own-teacher pipeline. So, that part of it is a part of the work that we do in diploma plus.
And I'm assuming in that, that there are even conversations about how you can continue to move through the district, and, I mean, several of you have been teachers, and how do you continue to grow your, grow your career? Are there conversations about those as well, like career paths?
Yes, ma'am, those conversations that take place at the high school and which leads to internships and making sure their students are career-ready.
Okay, just one last question, do we have, I know we talked about like who graduated last year, but have we been able to see results or go back and kind of vet those numbers historically on where we've been able to recruit and retain our students?
Not, not, I would say not from this department, because the K-step-up grant, that department, we're just in the first year of that grant.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Dr. Bilbo Urban, this is Randy, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Quick question, just for clarification, recently became aware or was told that our counselors now sit under diploma plus, is that correct? And that you oversee our counselors in the district as of the fall of twenty nineteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, but that, that, the counselor budget doesn't come out of the diploma plus budget?
No, sir.
Okay.
If I, Randy, if I can actually address that, this is Tracy Kaiser. We changed that from the student services budget. No, I'm sorry, it wasn't the student services, I can't recall now where they were budgeted, if somebody else can help me. But we changed the budget.
It, it is my budget, it was in my budget.
Okay. Yeah, and what we did is we changed the budget code, but we didn't move it over to this spreadsheet. So, it will be uploaded into business plus correctly, we just didn't actually get it moved over to this spreadsheet. And this is one thing, you know, as we find different issues that maybe don't look quite right, that is going to be so much better when we're fully using the Olive View program, because it will be pulling it for us versus these manually-made spreadsheets where we can have formula errors and not get things moved from, you know, we're dealing with a hundred spreadsheets, you know? So, it is, will be budgeted in this budget, it's just not showing on the spreadsheet, if that helps clarify.
Thank you, Tracy, so a follow-up question is, what's the reason that it was moved from student services into diploma plus? Like, just for process-wise, it just seems to make a lot more sense to be under student services and rather than directly under diploma plus, but I'm sure there's some, some reasons that that was then?
I reassigned them because our counselors were not only just doing student services, they were also doing the academic side, and so they have to make sure that kids are prepared. And so, they had to get the academic side for the college and not just the one side, so it fit better under the diploma plus track, so they are there. It's a reporting cycle, but what people felt, I understand, I got that email too. What people felt to realize is that we do cross, we cross-train. And so, if there's something that they need out of student services, definitely pull them in for student services. It's just the need was there and that our kids were not getting what they needed, not, no slight to Lisa, because Lisa doesn't do the curriculum side in college, career readiness, and the, that's not her area, and it fit better. And we were looking at, how do we do the schedule? That's a big part at the secondary level of scheduling kids, and at the elementary level, when they get to fifth grade, how do we schedule? And when we are looking at some of the things of, for counselors, it was a better fit. So, that's me, I reassigned them to diploma plus.
But just to be sure, they're not losing, thank you for the clarification, Tracy and Dr. Faust, but they're not losing any of the, the support, again, here I go on my, on my soapbox around, around trauma, around those behavioral health supports, those resources, because that to me is a really important part of what our counselors do, I get the whole, the whole academic side piece of it as well. But I, I just, I strongly feel that the supports that our counselors provide for our students and families in terms of providing those resources for families who have suffered some type of trauma or who have some behavioral health needs, or, or whatever, whatever the case may be. So, I, I just, I, I'm having a little trouble figuring out why they were, why they were moved from student services to
Remember, so, but you have to remember, we have a social worker in every one of our buildings too. So, they work in tandem, and sometimes the social worker covers more of that than our, our counselors, because there's a different curriculum for, in college, for our counselors, even though we think of that as the counselor counselor, but when you do academic counseling, it's a different type of curriculum, but our social workers actually feed more into that. Now, I mean, that's, you know, of course, they may seem different, but if we pull those curriculums from those universities, we can show what they do and what they don't do. And so, we're just, they're still all in, under the same roof of central office. Individuals get comfortable with where they are, and so, we have to make sure that we are doing what's best for our students. And the, the board two, three years ago gave every school a social worker, so that trauma enforced does work there, but they work in tandem. And I think what happens is we get caught up in our silos and think, oh, well, I can't, because they moved me from this department, I can't do anything, and it's all I can do. That's not true, because when we have individuals with crisis, the first thing, I mean, Lisa does is Lisa reaches out across, we have our psychologists, we have our counselors, we have our, our social workers, they all work together, it's just how they are structured in there.
Yeah, thank, no, thank you, and, and that makes sense, I just, also, to be fair to Dr. Bilbo Urban, to make sure that she has the supports to be able to oversee all of those counselors, because there's a lot, right? And so, just making sure that you have the, the support in order to, to, to visit with and see and support all of those counselors on top of like the diploma plus stuff that you're doing as well. So, that was just another, another question, but thank you for the information.
Dr. LaShonda, Dr. Winnigan.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I served with a lady on another board who used to be, who used to attend your diploma plus steering committee meetings, and this year, I guess they were discontinued. Reason, question is, why discontinued? And the second question, do you plan to recontinue?
So, there were some steering committee meetings, because we were working on the Perkins Five Grant, where we were meeting as a larger district, and so, we did not have our in-district steering committee meeting because of the larger meeting with the other districts in completing the Perkins Grant. The spring semester, we were supposed to host our steering committee meeting, and we just not, didn't get a chance to. They will continue in the fall, and they will, both will be our own district steering committee meetings and not in relation to the grants.
Okay, so then, and actually, they may be virtual, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, but they will be held. We just didn't do a virtual, we didn't do one for this spring. I didn't think to go ahead and schedule the, a virtual steering committee meeting for the spring.
Please notify us, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Dr. Bilbo Urban.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam President, Dr. Faust, board members.
Good morning.
Within the ESL migrant department, there are three separate budgets that we work from. So, the budget that you see on the screen right now is called the bilingual fund. And the bilingual fund monies are generated from our September twentieth count. Within the bilingual fund, ESL teachers are paid out of this fund. There are seventy ESL teachers out in the buildings. Also, instructional ESL aides come out of this fund, and there are fifty-one instructional ESL aides. The nine bilingual community outreach workers come out of this fund. There are two data technicians for the department. There are four instructional coaches paid for out of this fund, and I want to qualify, these are ESL instructional coaches. And the administrator salary for the department comes out of the bilingual fund. If you scroll down, the non-salary items that come out of the bilingual fund, basic office supplies and instructional supplies, mileage for admin, what that actually encompasses is any mileage for the director, the instructional coaches, and the nine outreach workers. And then professional services, what you'll see is last year, we spent forty-five thousand and five hundred dollars on PSYOP services. We actually now are going to put that in the Title III fund, and I'll explain that shortly. So, Title III is the federal funds that also supplement ESL. We have four instructional coaches paid for out of Title III. We have three ESL family advocates. Substitutes, I'll speak to substitutes here shortly. But next year's summer school program, we have budgeted teachers for that program, summer school supplies and transportation for summer school out of Title III. Mileage, I wanted to account for not only the three advocates, the four instructional coaches, but also if there's any mileage, if a teacher is traveling for professional development, because at one point in time, we were discussing having more district-related professional development next year. My understanding now that that is not going to take place. So, when the new director is hired, they can look at taking some of those funds and redistributing those funds. Software, you see a change from a hundred and four thousand down to thirty-five thousand. If you recall, this past year, we did a pilot program in our intensive language centers. We wanted to see if Imagine Learning or Rosetta Stone was more appropriate for our newcomer students attending the ILCs as opposed to System Forty-four, Do the Math and Math One Eighty. What we found is we have a better return on investment by utilizing System Forty-four, Do the Math and Math One Eighty. So, that thirty-five thousand dollars will be the cost for that agreement with HMH was the, which is the company that we will purchase that from. I do have a separate presentation prepared, when I'm able to do that with the board, about our findings with those three programs. Professional services, moving from eight thousand to twenty-two thousand. We are going to be bringing in an outside presenter. She was actually brought in by the state of Kansas this past year, her name is Carol Salva. And I scheduled two days of her training, and her training is called Boosting Achievement, Reaching Students With Interrupted and Minimal Education. So, these two days are going to be virtual. The first day will be for ESL staff to attend, and there is budgeted for substitutes for that day. And then the second day, I wanted to open up the opportunity to other teachers in our system, so they can receive some initial training on literacy practices that best supports our newcomer students. And then the other portion of the professional services, I'm wanting to also bring in an outside consultant who works with specific literacy strategies for middle school students and elementary students. How are we best meeting the needs of our ELS within the general education setting? Another caveat to that, when we talk about literacy framework, is the PSYOP model. This past school year, we started with the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, which is a research-based literacy practice that supports diverse learners. So, in the first phase of rolling PSYOP out to the system, we did a train-the-trainer model, so there were twenty individuals trained. And then, we have been training the building-based instructional coaches and all building-level principals, which includes the assistant principals. There were also specific schools who were able to come aboard this past school year and start receiving the training. And then, we plan on expanding that and continue to roll out PSYOP for all of our teachers, so they can best support literacy practices for diverse learners throughout any content area. Out of district travel, there are opportunities for our staff to attend what's, it's Mid-Tesal. Several of our teachers have always asked to attend Mid-Tesal this coming school year. It will be located in Des Moines. Not knowing if it will be able to take place face-to-face, or whether it will be a virtual session, I wanted to put some funds in there, so our teachers can continue to get professional development around best practices and hear from other teachers throughout the nation. Transportation for student, those are transportation funds to transport our students who qualify to attend an intensive language center. So, they are bused from their school of residence to whichever school they will attend for an ILC building. You also see in Title III parochial, so a certain percentage of our Title III funds is set aside for our parochial schools, so they can have funding to assist their English learners on their campuses. Title III carryover, traditionally, our department has operated with a carryover fund. Moving forward to next year, we will not be operating with a carryover. The expectation will be to spend the Title III funds within the current year. So, that's why you don't see anything budgeted for the carryover fund for next year. The migrant funds are also federal funds. What is nice is that number is higher than what we were going to anticipate. In the past, we have operated with a budget of well over six hundred thousand dollars for our migrant funds. At the beginning of this year, we were informed by our state director that that was going to be dramatically cut because of cuts at the federal level. So, in preparation, we were preparing to perhaps get anywhere from only two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand for our migrant funds, because we had been operating at the state with a carryover. And so, the state director was able to provide more funds to us. And he let us know at the beginning of the year, he was no longer going to be able to do that. So, pleasantly surprised that we were able to receive this anticipated amount. So, currently, there are five migrant advocates, and I wanted to budget in for perhaps, and this has not been updated. I wanted to budget in, perhaps if the new director would like to bring on an additional advocate, they would have the opportunity to do that. The department secretary will be paid out of migrant funds. There is one specific data specialist for migrant, you saw there were two data specialists for ESL. There's one for migrant, because there is a lot of data upkeep in the migrant system, which is called MCICS. Benefits are for the advocates and the data specialists and the secretary. We do tutoring at building sites, so that's what the extra duty is set aside for. We do events, and some of you have attended some of our events, so we set aside food costs for parental involvement. General supplies for migrant really is purchasing supplies for students and for families. And then, office supplies is if we purchase anything for the events, like if we want to purchase any paper or things for the events. Staff mileage, our migrant advocates do a lot of traveling. So, we always try and budget a good amount for our mileage. Transportation is for tutoring, so if students stay after for our migrant tutoring, then we are billed for that service. Books, the books are purchases, purchased for students. And then, software, if we want to provide any software during our tutoring, then there's monies set aside for that. We do summer school with migrant students, so supplies, transportation, and extra duty are set aside for that as well.
Ms. Scott, help me explain the parochial school cost again, please.
So when we receive our Title III funds, a percentage of the funds is set aside for parochial. So parochial has the ability to purchase what they feel they need to support their ELS. And the funding comes, it's like, I might be using the wrong terminology and somebody will correct me, kind of like a pass-through. But we do manage the funds. So if they want to purchase, let's say, some textbooks, the purchase order comes through our department and then we take it from there.
Okay, so you have three line items for what, all Wyandotte County parochial schools? Or how, help me understand what you're talking about more.
So if I could, let me-
I can probably jump in here, Dr. Nguyen.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Those schools file with the state and the state sends us the number of students at the sites that are in Wyandotte County in our school boundaries. And based on those numbers, then that tells us how much we dispense to each and which sites are going to get them each year. And so we have three sites right now within our school boundaries that do receive those funds.
And these are just for ELL students?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And what are those three sites?
Chris, we might have to get those to you unless you can remember them off the top of your head.
The three that typically have the most are Christ the King, Resurrection, and St. Patrick's.
Yes, there we go.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one question and this is not necessarily directed towards anyone and we can talk about it later. I hear us doing a lot of different trainings and I appreciate it. I think it's great. One of my just follow-up questions, we can talk about again later, is how do we use our training and how do we make sure that it's being funneled down to others? I think training is great, but if we're not figuring out a plan to leverage it and keep it consistent, I think things, we just go through processes sometimes and they don't, we don't follow through. I'm speaking in general.
I understand what you're saying and that's why it's important for us when I talk about PSYOP, for example, we did the Train The Trainer model. So we have individuals, myself included, that ensure that the model is being implemented properly. The ESL instructional coaches, when they go out to a building to support a building with ESL needs, then they're able to ensure that it's also being implemented appropriately. That's why I also wanted to train the building-based instructional coaches as well as the building principals, so they had an understanding of what the model should look like. Thank you.
Oh, and Ms. Scott, you say, now, are you continuing to serve in this capacity or not? I'm not muted.
She's frozen.
No, she's not. She's, starting July, she will be an instructional improvement officer.
Okay, so there will be a new director of ESL?
Yes.
And she said that she thought then the new director would want to hire an additional staff?
I don't know.
She's frozen right now. Hopefully-
Okay, we can go back to it. It'll come back again. Thank you.
Yeah, she mentioned potentially hiring another advocate migrant, or no, another advocate I thought she mentioned. So she, I think she included it in the line item. I forget which line that is, but-
Can we put that on-
Can you see me again now?
Oh, there she is.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Dr. Nguyen, was your question answered?
No.
When I was frozen.
Were, are you adding another advocate or another staff person, administrator?
No, the only additional is in migrant. And so there is the ability to add an additional migrant advocate.
Okay, thank you. That answered it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. The staff, the salary you have is current?
For teachers?
No, for the administrator.
That's current.
Okay, thank you.
So that may change, yes.
Hi, Ms. Scott. This is Randy. Thank you for the work you've done with ESL and congratulations on your move over to as an IO. Just a quick question in terms of the hiring process for your replacement. And I don't get into specifics or details, but just curious how that's going and if we have time. And it's probably more for Kelly Tishman, I'm sorry. But also, are you, are you involved in the process as well in terms of like the search and the interview and in order to kind of use your expertise in this space to help bring in the new person and get them up to speed?
Correct. So I can update you as to where we're at in the process. So the position was posted for the standard amount of time, which ended on June fifteenth. So now Dr. Charles, who is my current supervisor with the department, she and I will look at all of the candidates and then we will have interviews once we're able to schedule them out with a panel. And I will be part of the process so I can lend some understanding around different aspects of what we need to look at when it comes to not only the qualified candidate, but all of the different aspects, because you're leading instruction, but you also have to lead operations and understand budgets and understand certain requirements when it comes to state regulations. So we want the best well-rounded individual to lead this department. The department's grown and we want to see the best person to lead to support our kids.
Okay, thank you very much. We do need-
And was it circulated locally? Was advertised locally?
I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Can we wait and address that at our board meeting and get the information? Thank you. We're ready to go on.
I believe I'm next. Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jody.
Hello there. So I'm going to go through the salaries. I know that was asked about specifically and then highlight the large changes. And then if you want to hear about the items that stayed the same, we can certainly circle back and get those. Line seven is the coordinator salary. That is mine. In line eight, that is for repair people for our instruments. We have one secretary at IARC. That would be line nine. And a difference here on line ten, last year we had one instructional coach for PE. This year, we added two positions, one for visual art and one for music. So those are the changes in this top category would be the instructional coach line number ten. Another big highlight would be line number twenty-four. And so the increase here for music supplies and also for art supplies, line number twenty-seven. If you all recall, back at the start of this school year, our district decided not to charge fees to students. And so there was a user fee for instruments of thirty-five dollars and various art fees ranging from five dollars up to forty dollars depending on what course they took. And so this supply money was requested to offset the difference of what would be billed out for our fees. Also, a change in the arts partners line would be line number thirty-nine. Not that we need a decrease to fund that, but because we did not see the contract through to the end of the fourth quarter, we had a quarter of this year's money that had already been paid out to Kansas City Young Audiences. They are holding that money for us to use next year. And so it will still be about a hundred and thirteen thousand to run the programs, but they are rolling that money forward for us. That contract had already been paid. Also, a large increase is line forty, transportation to run all of our events. And that's because a lot of our transportation, we actually were using out of our revolving account, which was funded through those fees that I mentioned earlier. And so that's the increase in transportation. Keep scrolling, please. Whoever's got that, I think it's Tracy that's got it. And then no increases here in the equipment. So I've highlighted the larger areas. Be happy to speak to any of the lines that we didn't go over where we asked for the same amount back or maybe just a slight difference.
Are there any questions?
Hey, Jody, really quick. So do we have a method for getting instruments to students who, if we are virtual, you know, there may be students transitioning from eighth grade to ninth grade or those fifth graders who start on those instruments? Do we have anything built in place to deliver or pick up instruments for our students this upcoming year? Have we thought about that?
We have thought about that. We are developing a logistics plan as we speak and it will be done in a similar fashion to what we did after spring break. After spring break, any student who did not take their instrument home over spring break had an opportunity to do a curbside pickup with their teacher. And so we would use a similar system to get those that enrolled for next year an instrument.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, the music teachers that are at the school will still be actively able to give students their instruments and things of that nature? Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then the other part to that is, does this transportation include the all-state transportation and competitions for students? Is that also included in this transportation?
There are two types of transportation for our students. One is what is funded out of our office at IARC. And then a few of the activities are actually funded through the activities at the high school level. For instance, if a kid makes the All-State Orchestra, that one is covered by the school. Or the all-district, the all-state, like their hotel and that thing is covered by the school. The events that we cover would be busing for the all-district event or our local festivals. If you can imagine, many of you attend the Marching Festival every year or our Vocal Music Festival. The buses for that, those days, come out of my office. Where the ones that are a little more activity-based, like the all-state, come from the school. But our local parades, as an example, our office pays for those. We do want to support all of our local businesses and we require that our bands attend, so we do cover those. And it covers trips to, let's say, we have a school that wants to do a workshop at the Nelson Atkins Museum. We would pay for transportation for that, that sort of thing.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Jody.
Ms. Lynn, this is Dr. Nguyen. I remember, I'll say back in the fall, Mr. Leon Brady, I'm sure you're familiar with his world-renowned reputation, said, he contacted you asking, did you ever consider, I guess, budgeting music lessons during the summer? I don't believe he ever heard of us back from you. Is there any, any funds or consideration as to next summer? If we are an open, not COVID problem? Have you ever considered, one, did you respond to him? Number two, have you ever considered music lessons in the, in the summer?
I actually have shared various phone calls with Mr. Brady and also connected him via email to all of our instrumental music teachers. So he does have their direct connection as well as the phone calls that we did share. And we have, we had some money through the foundation, through a donor, for some student tuition for summer camps. And so we have supported several students through summer in that way. We also have a formal program through UMKC where they come to our campuses to give private lessons throughout the year. Currently, we have about forty students in that program. We are looking to expand it. And it's district-wide, the kids do audition to get in. And then through the foundation and some other donors, just direct to our office, we have been able to help some kids with summer camps and summer lessons.
But we don't do a coordinated summer camp of district-wide?
We have not. We have not. No, we have not.
Well, again, we have a new grant writer. Maybe that's something to look for and plan for next summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, but it's not for Ms. Lynn, but it's about something that she has on her budget for Mr. Covington. Since we're in the process of trying to secure a company for a new lighting system, she has theater lights and she also has electrical work for theater lighting. Would that be included in the proposals to cover that? And that wouldn't be something she would have to cover since we're in the process of getting lighting? I didn't know if Mr. Covington could answer that.
He, I don't know the specific lights that she referring to. If it's lights for like production, those would not be lights that's like attached to the building because they know they flash-
Well, I mean, I didn't know because she got this and if we got them there, whichever company we choose, if they could give us a discount, you know, we're spending all this money. And I didn't know if that would be something we could negotiate to try to get-
Typically, to fix the lights or do electrical work, those are maintenance projects that we do in-house. So there's dollars tied to those line items. So we will work with Ms. Lynn. If there are some projects that we need to get funded through our regular maintenance budget, we'll go over to those schools and get them done.
Okay, thank you.
But I just saw theater lights and, you know, they're putting in new lights. I didn't know if they would do that too, if we negotiated with them because we're going to spend a lot of money. So why not take advantage of the opportunity?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you.
The next one was Ms. Hempel, who parents as teachers, and she has a wedding. So she is out of town for her son's wedding today. So we will have to skip the parent as teachers line and move on to Lisa Stewart, Director of Student Services.
Dennis, I do believe that Kim Shaw may be available to go over the parents as teachers. I'll let her jump in if that's the case.
Yeah, I'm here and I'm able to speak to most of her budget if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay, great. So, good morning, board. Nice to see you today. The major changes in the parents' teachers' contract is that of the very first line, number six, where she is planning to increase her number of parent educators to one, by one point five. And that will be through funding that's coming in. It's not, it would not be seen, or she does not believe that this has any impact as far as the commitment of the district to these additional positions. I want to comment just for a second, however, why you see everything listed twice. And that is because she has a federal grant for the mother infant early childhood home visiting grant. And so that's why everything is listed, you'll see everything listed twice. So she has, with an increase of the one point five parent educator in line six, that would move her to having seventeen parent educators. And then in line seven, she has four parent educators that work under the federal grant that I just mentioned. The other noticing, noticeable difference, or I would say significant observation that jumps out is right there under fringe, line seventeen. There's, it goes from seventy-seven to one-twenty-five. And I would have to lean on Tracy or Brad to speak to that. I think it was the formula. Can you share anything more on that specifically, Tracy?
Yes. So of course, there is an anticipated cost of increase in health insurance. And so we updated that and then with the additional staff members, that would also increase the cost of the health insurance. So, and I think she may have, since this is a self-contained budget and she has to pay for it all, the district does not support this budget. So I think she may have even anticipated a little bit more of a health insurance increase since we don't know exactly what's going to happen through the year. So she always overbudgets, so that way she's got the money available.
Thank you. As you scroll down to the non-salary items, you'll see some changes, some decreases in one travel line, but an increase in another, and that's just due to the increase in parent educators. There's also an increase in supplies on line thirty-seven. That's due to the additional parent educators would be part of that to support their needs. And I also want to draw attention to line forty-nine, which is interpreting services. You'll, that has, oh, good, this has been corrected. So you can see that there is a decrease from nineteen- So you can see that there is a decrease from 19,000 to 10,000. And that is because one of her partners is going to be picking up some of the costs for those interpreting services. So down at the bottom there, you can see the grand total. And her outside revenue, I think, is something to point out as well. Her outside revenue equates to 1,000, or 1,120,000, which leaves a shortfall of 139,000 approximately. The district has typically, or past five years or so, had contributed 169,000. And so we're down to 139,000. So there's that, that would be the district's contribution this year.
Yeah, and I may have misspoke when I said that. I believe there is a requirement of some sort of match that we have to do. And so it depends on her level of funding, on what the district has to, has to match as well.
Correct, correct. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Madam President, Dr. Faust.
Good morning.
Good morning. Take you through the first line item, number seven, is the administrative coordinator positions. We have six coordinators. The secretary's position, there are that also support kids' own records, the budget, and of course, the switchboard. As you scroll down, you will begin to see the insurance for the salaries and the groupings. There is a program specialist for the truancy program, one. A part-time truancy social worker that facilitates the parent workshops for our parents for students that are chronically absent. We also have the extra duty that supports four part-time staff and evening staff that run the evening program. We also have to provide security when we run the evening program during the week. Also includes the group insurance. As you scroll down, we have our office supplies, other things that we have in their mileage, and the second-step curriculum. One thing I do want to, our translation costs that we provide for the district, are the biggest costs we have there is for our Family Advocacy Day, our parent-teacher conferences, and our homeless transportation. If you keep scrolling down, you will see the counselor salaries that will be moved to the diploma-plus budget. So the significant change in my budget will go from about 70 to 2 million. Those will be moved over to the diploma-plus budget. Also in here is the group insurance, and then the cost to print the Code of Conduct and the Parent Handbook. Those are both included in those costs. We also include it on the district website. Also included here is ASP salaries that's allocated to each high school and middle school. So each high school receives about $7,000, $7,200. It's for extra duty. And then the high, the middle schools, the seven middle schools receive about 17,000, and that's for a part-time short-term suspension monitor, which some of you may have been familiar with. It's similar to ISS, but they use it for a short-term suspension recovery, the recovery room. So for those salaries includes the group insurance, Social Security. There's no longer any ASP software. And then our general fund, this transportation, that's the biggest cost that we have in my budget for our students that are homeless. One of the, as I indicated before, of our six coordinators, one of the coordinator positions is funded through, so I'll let Lisa speak a little bit about that.
Right, thank you, Lisa. There really is no change in this position at all, other than the funding stream. We're going to move the Coordinator of Social and Emotional Learnings funding from a general code to the Title IV Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant, because that does fall into the safe and healthy students and staff category. And so we're just going to switch that funding stream.
Okay, if you want to keep scrolling, if I'm at the end. And then that's, that's the, at the very bottom is the McKinney-Ventle Grant. We had, we do have several grants that fund our initiatives in the department. So if there are any questions?
Right, thank you very much. Thanks, Lisa, for all that you do.
Thank you.
Lisa, could you go back to 42 line item?
Yes, so they can scroll up for me.
So what does that mean? Are you using at-risk funds for transportation?
Yes, I use both general fund and at-risk funds, because our homeless costs for transportation are so high. We co-share with districts. We have a contract with assisted transportation that Wayne helps to facilitate. And then of course, if a student has placed and is not in their attendance area, then we pay our own transportation to make sure they get to their school of origin. So we have both general fund and at-risk funds.
And with the new regulation, does, are transportation funds allowed? Are transportation costs allowed?
Through the at-risk funds?
Right.
I'll have to defer.
Please, because again, I wouldn't want us to have to pay anything back.
Yes, absolutely.
One other, and you said, I wrote your note down. How many administrators besides yourself? Another one?
We have one, Director Me, and an assistant director.
So line item 11 is how many people?
Line item 11 is two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I think I'm up next. Good morning, Board. My name's Renee Friers. I'm going to talk to you a little this morning about budgets and for the vocational programs. The big changes that you'll see are going to be in, there's an increase there on line 11. That is a $20,000 stipend. That used, those budgets used to live in the diploma plus. Those are for our high school, academy, college career coordinators. They set up college career visits for students. So we thought those might be best represented under our career ed and vocational fundings. So those stipends were moved from the diploma plus to the vocational budget. They're not an increase, that's simply a move. We move on down. The funds that are non-salary do go directly into our classrooms for the most part. You'll see an increase there in instructional supplies. I'll have your, or I'll ask you to glance your eyes down at line 28. It looks like a huge increase up there on line 15, but when you look down on line 28, we've actually reduced this budget a little bit. So what we've done is simply shift how we're going to utilize our budgets within this entire package. So what I found last year was that I needed quite a bit more money in the instructional supply line, and quite a bit less in equipment. For the state of Kansas, under federal guidelines, equipment now is defined as anything over $5,000. We simply don't buy that much equipment that's over $5,000. But we certainly need lots of classroom instructional supplies and equipment, and materials that are less than 5,000. So I've increased that first line 15 quite a bit. As you scan down, everything else is virtually the same until you get to the equipment line, where it's quite a bit less, because we simply don't have a budget need for that large equipment in, in our high schools. When we scroll on down, we're going to see that we get to Title IV monies. Again, the only increase here is that this year, we were working with a $40,000 budget, as noted in line 65. That's been increased to a $60,000 budget, because we're going to begin to include our elementaries in our Title IV monies. And our plans there are to bring some STEM activities that are very hands-on, student-engaging, and directly connected to real-world activities to our elementary students. And so we're very excited about doing this. We know that students begin to sometimes sadly disengage as early as third grade. And so we want to make sure that we are giving our students very current, very hands-on activities early, so they not only begin to certainly learn their core values and their core skills, but can begin to connect those to hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math activities. There'll be a lot about careers included in this kind of work. So that is the increase or change that you see represented in those Title IV. When we get to Perkins, I'll let, let's start at the bottom, because the most shocking change is the dramatic reduction in our Perkins funding for next year. This occurred because last year, the state of Kansas had a surplus in their statewide Perkins funding. And so they were able to take that surplus and distribute it evenly, based on the number of students and the monies that we were currently getting. They distributed that money to all of the schools that receive Perkins funding, all the secondary schools receiving Perkins funding. So we had a wonderful, may I use the word bonus, last year, which took us quite a bit higher than what we have originally and typically been receiving in our Perkins fundings. So that is why we had $415,000 last year. We're back to the world of reality this year. And so we'll be receiving 345,186. These dollars are calculated, of course, these come down from the federal government and are calculated at the state level. And the 345,000 is in line with what we have generally been receiving from the state in Perkins. We plan to spend this money very much like we have in the past. So aside from the sad reduction due to that state overage a year ago, again, this mainly goes in, these dollars mainly go to our teachers for materials, supplies, and professional development. May I answer any questions for you?
No questions? Well, thank you so much. We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Faust.
Good morning.
Good, should I say afternoon? We're getting close to that, aren't we?
It is afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'll briefly go through the athletic budget. There's just about three lines that have changed, and all those due to operational costs. The first one on that second line of ambulance, there's going to be a small increase. I don't have it yet, but I know it's coming. They told me last fall with the Kansas Fire Department, who has EMTs and medical professionals, ambulance is at every one of our home football games. The next line, game officials, you'll see a larger increase there. And that is the cost of games. Just to kind of give you an idea, we have about 200 middle school home games and about 600 high school home games. So with those 800 games, that's about $120 for a couple of officials a game. Let's see, and the last one is a small increase in the track conference timing. We have to hire out someone when we host the regional track meet. And so there'll be an additional increase in cost. Other than that, you're going to see that the budget stays pretty much in line as it has been from 1920. If you have any questions, I can go through and answer anything.
Any question? Good morning, this is Dr. Nguyen. I see postseason hotels, but no postseason bus cost?
Right. Okay, so the postseason rentals, hotels, and meals are for, obviously, the sub-state, regional, state tournaments. We typically will always take a bus if it's going straight there and back. But many of those tournaments are multiple days, and we don't have that large a group of numbers, and it's more expensive, actually. It's easier to rent a van, get there, stay for the two to three overnights, and then come back, rather than paying the driver, the bus driver, all time, and hotel rooms.
So where is that cost for the van?
It would be with postseason rentals if we needed to take one. It would be in that area.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else?
I have a question. With COVID-19 and the uncertainty, if we don't have the season, I don't know how far in advance you book referees. Will they only be paid if they showed up?
Yes, that's correct. We've already scheduled the entire year. We did that before all the athletic directors left in May. We stay in close contact with the commissioner, and obviously, everybody's prepared to make those changes, if we need to.
Thank you so much.
And I'm sorry, one more question. If we have contracts for coaches, if we don't have the season, are they paid, or how does that work?
I, at this point in time, I haven't had a conversation, because we're waiting to see. Kaysha is planning a full return back. Obviously, it'll depend on what our local health authorities tell us. But I have not had that conversation yet.
No, I was just wondering, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but if it did, do we still honor the contracts? Because we signed them ahead of time? How does that work?
I think it would depend a little bit. So for example, in the spring, we had some sports get canceled. And as part of the governor's order or the state's order, we had to pay everybody their salaries. So that included, with guidance from the state, paying the supplemental contracts. I think if you had a situation where the season was canceled in advance of the contract being fulfilled, the contracts always have a provision in there that says you wouldn't have to pay it necessarily. We could think of a situation where you don't have enough kids to fill a team, or you don't have, or the coach is unable to complete the contract, for whatever reason. In those situations, you might not pay it out. I, I don't know, I think it'd probably be up to the board at the end of the day, if you have another COVID situation, as to what you would do. But I also expect that the government, or the governor, would step in again and suggest everybody gets paid, so.
Because I didn't know if it was in the contract. I've started a season, and because of the weather, we did half of it, we still got paid. But that's a little different than what we're talking. I was just wondering, what do we do?
Yeah, typically, the supplemental contracts are for the season, and if the season starts, or they do the work, they get, they get paid for that contract. There, there is a carve-out. So for example, if, you know, I can think of a situation where you let a coach go, then it's a proration. But it's for cause that's unrelated, like you said, weather. You know, I think you still have to pay the money at that point.
Yeah, yeah, I got that, but I didn't know with COVID, how does it work? You know, we're planning ahead. We're not sure, and everything is iffy. Then what if? But.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. This is Kim Shaw again. I'm going to speak on behalf of the at-risk preschool budget for Dr. Cook. She's not able to be here today. She has a funeral of a family member that she is attending this morning. So as we look at this budget, you will see that, to give you some background information, the preschool teacher salaries represents, that first line there, number seven, represents 17 preschool teachers. And then the second line there, line eight, represents five teacher associates that work with, some of them work with those teachers. A lot of the 17 teachers also work in collaborative classrooms, where they have a special ed teacher that is partnered with them in a pair. So that's why you don't see a match of the 17 and the five. On line, let's see, number 12, you'll see an increase there. We currently have been paying for one behavioral mental health interventionist out of the at-risk preschool budget. We're going to move that to three. And so that's an increase there of two people, to be able to support both the preschool sites that are strictly at-risk preschool, preschool buildings, as. preschool buildings, as well as the preschool classrooms that we have across six of our elementary schools. On line, sorry, I can't see the numbers, 15, you'll see a slight reduction there in our IC costs. We have not necessarily reduced our number of instructional coaches, but we are readjusting where they're being paid from. And so you'll see a point, I think it's a .5 reduction here, as well as in line, let's see, number 23, the nurses. We had budgeted last year for two nurses, but in the end, found that we were only paying for one. And so we are budgeting for the one nurse that is able to support in addition to those that are paid out of the general fund. The other major change that you'll see is down on line 36. And that says CD consultation. What that stands for is conscious discipline consultation. Last year, I believe, was in October, we brought a contract to you to partner with the Conscious Discipline Group to really bring in some very strategic, purposeful, social, emotional supports to our early childhood classrooms. And that was a grant that came through to help support specifically in the Head Start sites. However, we found that this training, we did involve our administration and instructional coaches from our at-risk sites as well. We found that we needed, that they really wanted to move this into all of our preschool sites. And so the request is to bring on that coaching for the at-risk preschool classrooms as well. And so that is the anticipated cost for that contract if the budget is indeed approved. There's a reduction in mileage strictly because we don't have as many people traveling that are fall under our at-risk budget. And then our transportation went down as well because we looked, did a, I think we did a more intensive look at the transportation, and we averaged out what had, what we had seen through the first three quarters this last year, knowing what the average cost would have probably been for fourth quarter to inform us for next year. And that is the major changes here within the at-risk budget.
Are there any questions?
This is. The Bradley Page, I had a, you said you only needed one nurse. Now, that one nurse is going to off the school?
No, it's not. We only needed one nurse. We only had one being paid out of this budget. And so we're going to continue to sustain that. The, we have, we have the nurses, but they fall under other funding streams.
Okay.
But this particular funding stream is just one.
I was just worried that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. I apologize.
Okay.
Dr. Shaw, this is Dr. Nguyen again. And help me understand, this is, these are, this budget is fully funded from at-risk dollars?
No, it is not fully funded. You'll see down there at the bottom. I believe the request for the, well, actually, I believe our funding from at-risk is approximately half.
Okay.
And so what we're asking from, my understanding is by, from Dr. Cook, is that the request is that we're trying to stick to this, as close to the same amount as last year in our request from the, from the district.
Okay. Mr. Gohean, are you familiar with the new legislation that I have referenced about the newer restrictions put on at-risk spending?
Just generally, I've not like reviewed the statute in detail. But I, it changes some of the restrictions and what some of the at-risk funding can be used for.
And that's what I'm just, I think someone needs to be aware of that as we move forward. And I mean, I don't, I don't know, let's say, now, what is class recertification is, line 34?
Sure. Class recertification is, it is a tool that we use that we go in and observe the classroom environment. It's, people, our instructional coaches have to be trained each year. And so we use this, we build in the cost to recertify the instructional coaches each year. And anyone else, our behavior, mental health providers are also certified to go in and, and assess the environment. There's seven domains that are assessed and looked for, and then we use that to give teachers feedback.
Okay, and I just use that as an example. I, I, whatever you said it is, it is. But I'm not sure if it may fit the new criteria. So that's why I think someone needs to really scrub clean the at-risk dollar budgets. Thank you.
We'll do that.
Dr. Nguyen, I just wanted to point out too, that in this budget, this is actually Fund 11, which is the four-year-old at-risk pre-K. That's actually a different fund than our regular at-risk funds, which are Fund 13. But with your point-outs on Fund 13, we are definitely going to review the at-risk funding for next year internally in the finance group.
And thank you, Mr. Isnard. And my question is, did that legislation narrow its application to just general at-risk funds? And that's the way I interpreted your comment.
Yeah, we will definitely review the at-risk. I just wanted to point out that this was pre-K, which is a separate program. So it has its own rules and regulations.
Right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam President, this is Tracy Kaiser. Since I'm sharing my screen, would this be an acceptable time to ask for a 10-minute restroom break?
Yes, we can take a break. Could I get a motion that we would break? And we will start at 12:15, and we'll come back into session at 12:25.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. We take 10 minutes. Are there any questions? Susan, roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Jenny Humphries?
Jenny Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Yes.
Dalvin Nguyen?
Dalvin Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager? Already on her break. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I voted for Harold. He didn't want him. So y'all about the same size.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Jenny Humphries?
Jenny Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Wanda Bradley Page, yes.
Dalvin Nguyen?
Dalvin Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We will go ahead with our next report on the budget.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Board, and Dr. Faust. I'm going to cover the Health Services portion of the SPED budget. The top section that you see there covers general nursing supplies, and those amounts will be unchanged. And then in the next section, you will see the two lines that reflect funding for substitute or supplemental nurses. And the reason that you see an increase there is because that had previously been budgeted in the HR budget. And so we thought it made more sense for organizational purposes to bring that back into the nursing expenses. The next two lines reflect nurse salaries, which includes one coordinator, which is myself, and 45 full-time registered nurses. And then moving down from there, you will see a decrease in the amount that was allotted for instructional equipment. No changes to the lines for maintenance and repairs or mileage. And then the next two lines are for dues and fees and for professional development, which had not previously been budgeted for.
Ms. Morris, hello, how are you?
I'm good.
This is Dr. Nguyen. Do we have any openings for hiring nurses?
We do.
How many, please?
We have eight.
Eight openings, and they have been advertised or have not?
They have. And we have started interviewing.
So have those, if you started interviewing, those positions been closed then?
I don't know if they're in a closed status.
Okay, and how would, how would one find out?
It'd be on the vacancy report that's in your board library, Dr. Nguyen.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, do they have to be an RN, or can they be an, I don't know if they still have LPNs?
They do still have LPNs, but we have a requirement that they have a registered nurse license.
And Ms. Morris, do you know where they were advertised?
They were posted on the district homepage.
Okay, thank you.
And you had a reduction in instructional equipment. What kind of equipment do you use?
So the instructional equipment line would include things like scales, otoscopes, stethoscopes, thermometers, blood pressure cuffs, those kind of items.
Thank you, sweetie.
You're welcome.
Morris, this is Randy Lopez. How are you? Good to see.
I'm good. How are you, Randy?
Good. Hey, I just wanted to first give you kudos. And you've done an amazing job on the restart teams and making sure. So I think, I just want to thank you for your leadership on that because you really helped us think through and pushed us on how to, how to make sure we're keeping our staff and our students healthy and safe. So I want to, I wanted to say thank you for that. To that, to that point, are we thinking about how to, how to maybe address, I don't know, how to, how to make our nursing facilities in our schools to make sure that they're, they're in the best shape to keep our kids safe and healthy? And are we, do we need to think about how we, how we redo some of the, the space that we do have currently, or maybe build out space for, in order to be compliant with just things around CDC guidelines for COVID and other things? And then also for telehealth, are we looking at anything in terms of telehealth for, for our kids and students and families? So just curious, and that may not be addressed here, but I was just curious.
Thank you. Yes, we have definitely been talking about on the multiple committees ways that we can restructure facilities or, you know, layouts in a way that would ensure social distancing. And then I guess your question about the telehealth, I have considered that. And I was already planning to look into that as an option to see if that's something that could be beneficial.
Thank you. And then just a follow-up, and I don't know if it falls under you. I know we have partnerships with several FQHC clinics and other clinics, look-alike clinics in the area. And we do have a partnership that's doing, I think it's with KU, to do some behavioral health therapy, both at the Bulldog Clinic at Wyandotte and at Harmon. But space has been an issue just because they weren't built to have some of those services and privacy. Does that fall under you? And if so, have we, are we thinking about, again, kind of how we, how we create space so that we can provide, as we think about trauma and behavioral health needs, those are some, some needs that we'll continue to have from here on out. So how we're building some of the spaces to be able to accommodate those sessions or needs for our students.
I don't know if that completely falls under my, under Health Services, but I think we're part of it. And so I can look into that and see how we can make sure that we're looking into that.
Awesome. Thanks so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Thank you.
Ms. Morris, this is kind of a sensitive topic, but it's related to Mr. Lopez's question. It's kind of a three-pronged question. And it may not come under your jurisdiction. But to what extent do we, and I know we do, but prenatal support for our, our young women and our young men who, who have expected, who are expecting? And because infant mortality is such a super, super high incidence in, in Wyandotte County, straight out. And then what do we do about sex education?
Let me interrupt. Could we get this to be a part of a question that we would discuss at our board meeting? Because we really do need to go on with our budget, and we can get an answer later because.
Yes, we will, we will need a further explanation because this is a long. But are there any budgetary items for prenatal support?
There are not any under my specific budget.
Would it come under your budget?
I would have to find out. I don't know if some of that is part of the Bulldog Clinic.
Or Student Services or something. So Madam President, that's the reason I ask because we, this is an issue. Our young women are giving birth.
I agree.
Large numbers, in fact. Infant mortality is a serious issue. And if it's not in the budget, if we, we feel that there's something we could be doing and we're not doing, then sure, that's a larger discussion. But Ms. Morris sure needs to know to do something and look to see how it impacts her budget.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. And I agree, that is something that we do need to address. And so we can just put that on a list of things that we can discuss and get information about, and have it presented to us so that we can try to make sure that we can add it to the budget if necessary. Thank you. I really appreciate your honesty about that.
So good morning, everyone. Good morning, Madam President. Good morning, members of our board and Superintendent Faust. Today, I'll be presenting all of the budgets that make up the Special Education budget. And so as I'm going through all of our budgets, I'd like you to keep the following ideas in mind. First is that the SPED budget is a bit unique because it has what's called the Maintenance of Effort requirement. And so basically, it's a requirement in federal grants and funding. And the gist of it is that districts are committed to maintaining the same level of services on a yearly basis. So basically, we must continue to spend and continue to spend to be able to get funding for the upcoming year. And then the final idea I'd like for you to remember about the SPED budget is that the funding of special education is primarily focused on people because people provide the services to our students. So that's actually the major portion of the budget that you'll see. Nearly $14 million in salaries for about 274 teachers, and approximately $3 million for para salaries. And that would be right at 130 salaries, specifically 128. And so the remainder of the budget is somewhat flat. We do see some changes and shifts in the substitute salary line. We're taking that down to 63,000 from the amount that it was last year, 289,000 to 200, 289,000. We just didn't spend a whole lot on substitutes this year. This particular amount would have been in the past if we needed to pull teachers from the classroom for a training. And so at the beginning of the school year, most of our training was done during pre-service, so when teachers returned back to school. And we did do a lot of training this school year due to COVID and the requirements that came with that. But we were able to do the vast amount of that training through Zoom. And so the goal is to continue to train teachers throughout this school year. Of course, being able to use Zoom and Google, Zoom and Google Classroom where necessary. And then another change you'll see scrolling down is the secretary's salary. We no longer have that position, so we keep it there. The next change is to, I think, the workman's comp. And this is somewhat of a historical amount that had been budgeted for a number of years. So you'll see that it was 478,989. That's what was budgeted for the 2019, 2020 school year. But what we noticed was that over the years, the rates of unemployment have gone down. And so they're not as high, high as they were in the past. So we'll carry that over. And then the next change you'll see is categorical aid disallowed. And we've just not spent anything here. That was budgeted at some point in time in the past. But we, when we began working through this year's budget, we did notice that we just didn't need this. And I think it goes to the good work that the Medicaid team is doing. And so we haven't had anything disallowed, so we just took it out of the budget. So the next shift you'll see is in supplies. You'll notice a change there. And so, you know, this change was because we overspent in this area throughout the school year. And then, so I kind of wanted to line things up with what we actually spend for supplies. And then in addition to that, I have also been asked by. And then in addition to that, I have also been asked by principals to be able to do more to support them with the needs of their life skills and autism classrooms. And so we know that those classrooms have more needs in terms of supplies, and so we want to be able to support there. And so the next line where you'll see a drastic reduction is in books. And so we decided to shift the nearly $200,000 from this line over to instructional software line, line 66, to include our new instructional technologies such as GoalBook, the Unique Learning System, which is for our life skills and autism classrooms. So now they have a curriculum that they are able to use for our students. So the $200,000 from books, you'll see that pretty much go down to the instructional software. And so workbooks, we haven't purchased over the past year, but that amount remains in the line for in the event that there are some purchases that would consist of workbooks. Equipment, you do see a change there because we have begun looking at providing more options in our assistive technology work. So we do anticipate purchasing more devices, more devices to assist students with speech-to-text and text-to-speech accommodations that we can use in our classrooms, and they will also be able to use at home. And then we have recruitment and retention. You'll see a change there. The amount that had been budgeted for in the past was pretty much a standard amount of $10,000. But I did reduce that slightly since now HR is taking on recruitment. We thought it would be okay to decrease this amount since they are the ones that are involved in year-round recruiting efforts. And so finally, instructional software, that's where you'll see a change. As I stated earlier, I reduced books by $200,000 to keep in line with basically where we are moving to in terms of being able to provide more instructional software for our students.
Are there any questions?
This is, I have two quick questions. The first question is around membership and associations. I just became aware of the National Black Deaf Advocates in which they say they work with K through 12 students to help with resources and mentoring deaf students. I can send you that information a little bit, but I wonder, do we partner with any special services for students of that nature? And if so, where would that cost be in this budget?
Yep, so that's a good question, Dr. Jaeger. And yes, please do send that information over. That would actually be a membership or subscription that we could take care of in the next budget that I'm going to share with you in our co-op budget. And so we would definitely be able to certainly meet with the organization and bring them on board as partners for deaf and hard-of-hearing students. Yes.
Another que, my last question is, in thinking about SPED, and I know we've talked about moving to GoalBook, is there any thought to help bring on an additional IC to help the special ed teachers in writing those goals, getting familiar with it, helping with any resources they may need a little closer or intimate? Because I know that some of the line items do not have any staff, but is there any additional support that we could provide to the SPED people who are writing those goals and initiatives? Because I didn't see one. So could you explain that a little more?
Yes, ma'am. So when I get to the co-op budget, you'll be able to see those positions, those individuals that you spoke of, they're captured within the co-op budget. But, you know, I, we do partner with our instructional coordinators collaboratively here with, you know, we're looking at doing a little bit more when it comes to curriculum and making sure that our kids are, who are in the general education setting, or the teachers are getting the support around the curriculum. We have not talked about adding any new positions to the co-op staff. GoalBook is, we have the teacher leaders, and so I've ensured that they've been trained right alongside with teachers because it's the teacher leaders, the special education teacher leaders, that actually help to support our special education teachers with the writing of their IEP goals.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Charles, I have a couple of questions. Did I misunderstand? You said you were going to leave the $50,000 in for workbooks?
Um, let me go back. Yes, so workbooks, yes, so the $50,000 for workbooks will remain. Yes.
Because it shows it being taken out.
Janie, I can speak to that. It's the column that she's referring to, column C, was actually the 1920s school year. So yes, that was removed, and part of that was used for the instructional software.
Okay. And what budget does the sign language, do the sign language interpreters come out of for the deaf and hard-of-hearing?
That should come out of the co-op budget.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
This is your line. I have a quick question. Well, line 65, recruitment and retention supplies. Can you just give me a high-level understanding of what that is?
Yeah, so we are consistently, in the past, you know, special education, for years, we have had a shortage here in Kansas City, Kansas. There's a nationwide shortage. And so we just want to be able to put forth more efforts in really looking for special education teachers as well as co-op staff members. And so that would go to any type of travel that we would need to do. You know, the one thing that comes to mind is the Council of Exceptional Children. I know that the members of the Special Education Department have attended that training. It's just for special educators. And folks come from all over the world to recruit teachers. It's a really good place to recruit teachers and school sites and anyone and everyone having to do with the work of special education. I also envision that some of that funding could be used to post our positions on websites that are specifically related to special education, such as journals and trade magazines and things of that nature. We are also, we know that the district has a LinkedIn profile, but one of the things that we've been talking about is kind of using some of this funding to be able to have one specifically for special education. So those are some of the ideas that we have that we could use, the $5,000 for recruitment and retention.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Charles, this is Dr. Winn. How many openings do we have, please?
Yes, I have that information for you. As of probably Wednesday, we're we're in a better place than we were this time last year. Right now, I have 15 teacher vacancies and six para vacancies.
I'm sorry, did I say 15?
15 teacher vacancies. Yes, ma'am. And six para-professional vacancies.
Okay.
And so what we're seeing right now is I, I think we're in a really, really good place with being fully staffed or as close to fully staffed as possible by the beginning of the school year, fingers crossed, when it comes to the co-teachers and teachers who support in the general education setting. I think we're in a really good place as of today. And that is due to, you know, all of the assistance that we've been getting from our agencies. And so right now, we're, you know, just pushing to be able to find life skills and autism teachers.
So are these 15 and six being posted as early as when?
They are posted right now. And they have been posted since the spring, since around March and April.
And where are they posted, please?
They are posted on the district's website.
Okay. And then for the school for our deaf and I guess deaf and blind students, do we not, do we try to serve them, or do we refer them to the school for the blind, school for the deaf?
So there are some, many, so the students who are in our district, for the most part, we are able to support our students who are in Bonner Springs, Piper, and KCK. However, this summer, we will be sending one student to receive extended school year services to the school for the blind. There is also collaboration that the superintendent and I have been meeting to see how we can work together and how some of their supports and services could even support the kids in our district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You can go on.
All right. So moving on-
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, Dr. Charles. You mentioned autism. What about dyslexia? Do they do equipment for them as well?
Yes. And so coming on Wednesday, so definitely, so the training that we will be doing for the Dyslexia Initiative that all of our school districts across Texas will be involved in, there will be funding that will come out of the co-op budget to support dyslexia, the Orton-Gillingham Reading Program, that funding also comes out. And so, yes, we will be thinking more broadly about how we serve these students with dyslexia.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so now I'm going to move us to the co-op budget. And so just some insight before we dig into the co-op budget. So keep in mind that we are a part of the Wyandotte Special Education Comprehensive Cooperative. And so the co-op is a collaboration in combination of resources between Kansas City, Kansas, Bonner Springs, and Piper School Districts. And so USC 500 is the administrator of the co-operative, and our two other partner districts help in the decision-making around these funds. So the thinking behind the establishment of a co-op is that some districts are so small, they are often unable to attract and retain the professionals needed to provide special education services. And so it helps to be able to join with the larger district. So as a part of the co-op, we can partner to provide those services. In the co-op budget, what you're going to see is that we pay the salaries for most of our special education staff, and you can see them listed in the salary below. And as you review the salary portion of the budget, you'll notice approximately an increase of 1% based on salary increases, insurance, and so on. So, Dr. Jaeger, you talked about instructional specialists to help teachers with the writing of IEPs. That's where the salaries of all of those individuals, they'll fall into this co-op budget. All right, the next portion of the co-op budget, of course, are the group insurance and social security and things of that nature. And then, of course, we have the non-salary portion of the co-op budget. And so in this budget, it pretty much remains flat. There are some changes to it. There's a slight change in the out-of-district line. Many of our staff attend trainings, meetings, and other professional developments as specified by the KSDE. So there's oftentimes travel to Wichita, Hutchinson, Salina, and other parts of the state. But I do think that with the advent of Zoom, we'll see more of these meetings and trainings being held online. So hopefully, that should be a reduction in that line. Another change you'll see is the IEP program membership. This is WebKids, and this is the system that houses all of our IEPs. And we do have a slight increase this year in the amount that we'll pay. And the final change in this budget is the line specific to attorney fees. We did increase this line to account for additional funding that we may need in the upcoming school year. And then the final budget that makes up the SPED budget is our Bridges Therapeutic Day School. And this budget basically remains the same for the upcoming school year. And that brings us to the end of the special education budget. Happy to take any questions that you may have for me.
Dr. Charles, could you go to the very top again, please?
Mm-hmm. Uh-oh.
Well, no, no, the co-op. Okay.
Oh, the co-op. Tracy, can you go to the co-op?
No, you're there. You're there.
Okay.
Yeah. So the co-op, because we are the largest district, we essentially manage the budget, correct?
Not necessarily. And I will ask Brad to kind of jump in and assist me with my- with my-
Okay, so that's not the real question. The real question, though, you said the teacher salaries-
I'm sorry.
Right. That, I mean, it's not the real question. The real question, you said the teacher salaries have a 1% increase?
About a 1% increase.
Okay, so help me understand, then with the other two school districts, can they add additional? And does this, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Dr. Winn, if you'd like me to answer that. It's Tracy Kaiser. So the co-op, all the superintendents work together to determine the needs, but they still fall under our negotiated agreement. So our teachers, the teachers that are paid through the co-op, since they're paid through our payroll, do follow the same guidance through our negotiated agreement. So, but anything on staff needs or anything like that, you know, Kelly works with all the superintendents to determine what's best for all three districts, if that answers your question.
Somewhat, but did not USC 500 negotiated agreement give more than 1% increase?
Right. I think what Kelly was referring to, because you can see, we actually don't have an increase in the teacher salary line. I think she was saying that there's an overall 1% increase in the entire co-op budget. And so, you know, when we did this, when we created this budget, negotiations obviously weren't completed at that point. So with a salary increase through the approved negotiated agreement, they'll have to find other funds within the co-op to make up that difference.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Hey, Dr. Charles, this is Randy Lopez. Good to see you. Quick question with the, in regards to Bridges and Fairfax. So we recently brought that work in-house, right? So we're no longer working with Greenbush with that contract. So just out of curiosity, the budget that's presented, are there some other anticipated costs that you might think might come up that we should be thinking about or considering in terms of the work that's being done there with our students at Bridges and Fairfax? And in particular, I was really interested in some of the place-based learning opportunities for our students there and really thinking outside of the box in terms of how we provide resources for those students and get them in their, you know, going with their education. So just curious if there were some other pieces that maybe aren't quite spelled out in the budget, but.
Yes, and I thank you, I thank you for that question. And so it's, this is actually the Bridges budget. We do have a separate budget that's coming out of general funds that will support the Fairfax budget. And Brad and I just, just last week, talked about giving them a supply budget and making sure that we had enough to begin the school year so that the teachers would be able to have the supplies that they needed. Any particular special education, not special education, social, emotional, learning, professional development. So just really making sure that the principal would be able to have some funds at his disposal. This is new, uncharted territory for all of us. And so we hope to be able to, I think, learn a lot in the first year of taking Fairfax. But we also knew that we wanted to be able to add more staff, you know. So we took into consideration how the school was staffed last year. And so we brought a couple of more positions so that we didn't overstretch the staff, and we wanted to make sure that the kids- and we wanted to make sure that the kids would have the support that they need. Um, I have no doubt that we'll continue to uh work with the principal to see what the needs are and to see where we could commit more funding um if we find that there would be a need for that throughout the school year. But the goal was to make sure that we open the school with all of the resources that they needed.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr.
Dr. Charles, I'll just add to that, that uh because under Fairfax, uh it was a contract and not us providing, obviously, the payroll um for those employees. Uh, that was actually housed under the finance budget. Um, so this year, what we've done um with this recent transition to bringing it in-house is separated into its own school budget. Um, so when we get to the school's budget spreadsheets, you'll see that, like any other school location. Uh, so the only one that remains in sped um here is just the Bridges location.
Yeah, that is correct. Um, but that change was also made after this budget was, was completed. So you won't see the increase on the school's budget. We're gonna go over here in just a few minutes to include those, those staff, because it still was under the contract um when we were creating these spreadsheets, just so you're aware.
Thank you so much. Ready for the next one?
Well, I'll start off explaining the school's budget. Just want everyone to remember, this is not, does not include the teachers that are allocated and budgeted in the HR's budget. These lines are mainly the title, title funds and other general supply funds types that are not uh budgeted centrally. And uh, as you can see, um, we met with all the schools individually. I passed out to everyone each of the schools' individual budgets and their histories. And um, that's pretty much, if someone have questions on the schools, I'll, I'll probably have to delve down into each individual school to find an answer, but we are here willing to do that.
Any others, is that information also on Alavue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there something going on with the screen? Or is it my computer?
I think it's your computer.
Do you see the school's line item budget? Well, summarized budget.
Right, I see two uh duplication. No, I don't see. I think I see duplication.
I think it's your computer.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. We're ready for the next one.
Two more.
Tell you what, I will cancel this.
I thought, is Carol still on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair, um, Madam Chair, Board.
Ms. Congresswoman.
Hello.
Um. The, basically, everything kinda stays the same as last year. The only changes we have, we had to add um six, uh actually, seven positions that um did not show in the um libraries. We had, uh, last year, we had uh six and a half unfilled librarian positions. And of course, this year, we're going with eight unfilled positions. Other than that, um, we we did the refresh of the elementary school of this year. And of course, uh, we were supposed to do the, the high schools and the uh middle schools, but we will keep it off until next year to help with the budget. Um, other than that, if you, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer that.
Are there any questions? Great, thank you, Ms. Levers.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this is the public uh library budget. And um, let me just see. On top is our salaries. We have in there um professional salaries, which includes twenty-two librarians as well. Um, para salaries are our associates. And then we have our hourly salaries uh as well. When you other than that, um it's basically all the same. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to entertain that.
Uh, Ms. Levers, Wanda.
Yes, ma'am.
You don't have any overtime for your custodial staff?
No, because we, we don't have overtime. We try not to do overtime uh for anybody in the libraries. You know, we, we run on a twelve-hour shift. So what we do with custodians, uh, they'll start, um, I guess, from twelve to, to nine or, you know, at night. And, and the morning shift from seven to two, I think it is. So basically, yeah, we, we kinda keep it you know, without having to pay overtime, because overtime used to kill us in the past years.
Okay. Hey, Carol, how are you today?
I'm fine, thank you, Dr. Yeager.
I wanted to clarify, the security guards that are located in our libraries, are they paid out the security guard budget? It's not a line item for you guys?
Yes, uh, and then they will charge us for the amount of time that they spend, you know, at the libraries. I think once a quarter, once a year, they will put it uh, uh, an amount through.
Okay, but it's not in your budget, is that correct?
No, it isn't.
Oh, it's twelve.
Line twelve.
Line twelve.
Oh, there it is, okay. Thank you. I just wasn't seeing it written out.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And uh, as you can see, um, uh, in, increase was just less than, just a little bit or more than half a percent on the salary scale. And overall, was just a little bit over half a percent on the overall budget, at point six-nine percent.
This is Yolanda, and I have a question kinda in the same vein where Stacy just came from. And I'm trying to remember our last meeting with uh when Doug Clements presented. So I do see that you have dollars budgeted here for your custodians, and I'm, I'm trying to remember all the others. Is there a difference in the way you budget yours here versus line items on other budgets we looked at? Because I don't remember seeing custodian salaries in other budgets. Is it because this is the library, or am I remembering incorrectly?
Uh, I'll answer that one. This is the public library. They have their own budget, their own mill levy. So they have to cover all their costs for the public library.
Okay.
We cover the schools' libraries.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to be one hundred percent sure of. Thank you. And then can I ask one more question? And this is not to the library, this is more uh to the district's budgets. How, what's the checks and balances? Is there like a monthly um report or something where they're going in and checking to see where they are, their expenditures for the, for the month, to make sure that they're staying within budget for the year? Or that the part, each department does it different?
With the, the actual data to, for people to review their budgets is live every day. I mean, we don't have like a monthly report that someone sends out, but it's live every day.
Okay, so it's up to each department to make sure they're staying within their budget for, for the year?
Yes.
Hey, Carol, this is Randy Lopez. Good to see you. Um, I froze up a little bit, so you may have said it, and I missed it. Um, just curious, I think this past year, we were doing some listening sessions for um, and a feasibility study regarding the downtown main library to see where we're at in terms of what we can do to improve the space and, and, or build new, or, you know, those conversations. Um, is that, is that still an ongoing conversation going into the coming school, uh, the coming um fiscal year? Um, and is there, is there something budgeted towards that end in terms of continuing that, that study and what that looks like?
Yes, we had it in the budget last year, because I was waiting, hoping that we would be able to pay it before this end of the school year. But I haven't received any uh invoices from the architects. I think they're almost done, because I've got uh, uh, a, a couple of days ago, um, an email stating uh whether we have time next week to, so that they can speak to us. So I don't have any, uh, anything to share. Uh, you know, they did reach out to us. Um, and also, we had the community come in, which you were part of. Uh, I appreciate it. Uh, but as a, a final uh, uh, report will most probably be uh sent to the board uh at, at what time, I don't know yet. And, and maybe we can find out uh next week where they're at.
Great, thank you. So that is something we're continuing to look at. I just didn't want, want that to get lost um in our community.
No.
That we weren't looking at um next step.
I appreciate it.
Moving forward, so, but thank you for your work on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And just for reference, we are going to be addressing those issues in our board meeting, because it's a conversation that we have had uh that needs to be taken care of, but because of everything that has happened, it was put on the back burner. And so beginning on Tuesday, you'll be hearing some information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levers, for your report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that is all the departments to review. Um, the next phase of the budget would be, we would get the parking lot uh questions answered and sent out to everybody. And at the next budget workshop, we will go back and review the uh, the budget I presented at the uh initial superintendent's proposed, and uh we have conversations and decisions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Covington. We appreciate everyone who presented today. We know that it was a time-consuming thing, but it's something that is necessary that we have to look at. Are there any questions from board members or comments?
Uh, yes, I have one request. Dennis or Kelly Tishman, could you make us a list of the new requested positions?
Yes.
That way, we have, we have one page, and we don't have to fumble through them all.
I would give you all a write-up of all the proposed changes that's in the budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, so with that, we are now ready to go into our executive session. And the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education recessed to executive session, and it is um one-twelve, so we're at one-fifteen for, and how many minutes will we need, please?
I think maybe fifteen ought to do it.
Okay, one-fifteen, and we will come out of our session at one-thirty. Um, discussing matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return at one-thirty with no action to follow. Could I get a motion, please?
Come over. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into our executive session. Are there any questions? Susan, would you do roll call vote, please?
Of course. Uh, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Jenny Humphries.
Jenny Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being present today.
You all have a good day.
Thanks, you too. Have a good day.
I'm here. Everyone here?
Not yet, we're, there's still a couple missing. Wanda and Yolanda.
Okay.
But you do have four present, if you wanted to bring us back.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion that we go back into our open session?
Second.
Is removed and seconded that we go back into open session in our board meeting. Are there any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Um, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark. Um, J D Humphries.
Jenny Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board members for your questions and statements relating to our budget. There was much information that was presented, and answers were given openly and honestly. Want to thank you all for helping for us to see that we can go above and beyond and with a purpose of us wanting to educate our students and utilizing the funds that have been presented. We will look forward to seeing you all.
Do you want to skip to another date? We need another workshop.
Is Mr. Covington present?
I will, I believe we could just do it during our regular board meet, meetings.
I, I don't believe so, because there, there are numbers that have not been corrected. I'd like to have the discussion for us, maybe have the nutritional minimum weigh fifteen dollars. So that has to be figured into the, to the accounting.
Could we do that and address it at our meeting on Tuesday, and then set a time for us to have an additional meeting?
Fine. We need to look at a time to set. This is what I'm just saying.
Exactly, but Tuesday would be the time in which we could set, set that up. And again, we have to take into consideration that the staff is already doing a lot, and we want to give them time to be able to work and do what they have to do daily. And if we can at least try to address those issues at our board meeting, if we can get them resolved. And Mr. Covington said that he would be sending uh responses to the questions that were brought up. So let's just wait until Tuesday and make that decision as to whether or not we need to win or if we're going to do another.
Well, Madam President, it's gonna have to be win, because remember, this is the budget.
I know.
And that, we don't, number one, know what money we're gonna get yet. Number two, but that, there, like you always say, there's a timeframe. We've got a time limit. So, so they may, yes, I know they're working, but also the budget is top priority.
I agree, but I think.
So, Madam President, Tuesday. Oh, okay. And so for our training, it has been confirmed that KASB can train us on the day that we designated um last month. So if we would put it on our calendars for July seventeenth, they are able to do our training as um I reached out and I advised that we give an update.
So are the board members, do you have any comments?
So what time is our training, KSB training?
Nine through three.
Nine to three, okay. So uh, we can do that. We also then need to get a time for us to uh look for our next budget workshop, so that what you're gonna do for Tuesday, right, Madam President? You want to skip to the date? Excuse me?
I'm suggesting that we do that to bring that, that uh everyone look at their calendars, and then on Tuesday, we select a date so that we can do it, if they, if, if it's in agreement that they want to have another training.
If the board wants to have another workshop.
Workshop, I'm sorry, thank you. Is that acceptable to the board members, for us to bring a date on Tuesday if we decide to have another workshop?
Yes, that's fine.
Randy?
Yes, that, that's, that's fine.
Jane?
Yeah. That's fine.
Thank you.
Were we, were we supposed to talk about um posting, the posting of um and handling of our board clerk position at this meeting, or is that, was that for Tuesday as well?
I think it's on Tuesday, Randy.
Okay, thank you.
And, and it will need to be done at, on Tuesday. We'll need to make some decisions.
Right.
Or you will rather.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Any other questions or comments? With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.